Owners need to know to keep their weapons out of the wrong hands. But we begin with the latest on the COVID-19 pandemic here at home.
Eris County Judge Lena Adalgo raising the COVID-19.
Casey, you ready?
Ready to go.
Uh oh, do I need to do that again? You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Welcome, welcome, welcome to our regularly scheduled council meeting, City of Lamarck. City Council regular meeting of January the 10th, 2022. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas, will conduct a regular meeting on January 10th, 2022, beginning immediately after the workshop. That begins at six o'clock. This is a regular meeting and we will go straight into our regular meeting in council chambers at 1109 B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. According to section 551.127B of the Texas Government Code, a quorum of the Lamarck City Council and the mayor intend to be and will physically be present at 1109 B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Kiera, would you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember District A, present. Councilmember District B.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Present.
Councilmember District D.
Present, and I am at the address of 1111 Bayou Road in the council's conference room.
And Mayor.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kiera. And we will now have our invocation and pledge. We are pleased to have Pastor Kevin Jones of the Greater Love Church with us tonight for our invocation. Certainly, we'd ask Mr. Carlson, our veteran here on council, to lead us in our pledge. Pastor Jones, you may approach the podium.
About his prayer. Oh, heavenly fathers, all we come this evening, Father God, is thank you, Father God, for another day, Father God. Oh, Father God, we just ask you, Lord, right now, Father God, to continue, let's bless the great city of Lamarck, Father God, and the mayor and all the council members, Father God, and everybody that's gathered here on this evening, Father God. Oh, Father God, we thank you, Lord, right now, Lord, we ask you, Lord, to open up our minds, and, Father God, that, Father God, that it be a successful meeting, Father God. And, Father God, we just ask you, Lord, to bless it, Father God, we thank you, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for what you've done and what you're gonna do, Father God, in this meeting, Father God. We thank you, Lord, we just ask you, Lord, to have your way, Father God. In Jesus' name we pray, amen, amen, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Jones, thank you, Councilmember. We've come now to a time of proclamation. We honor those, we honor those members of our community, those organizations that work within our community, and certainly those days that are important to us as a community. And today, we have two proclamations that we would like to issue. One of these proclamations is certainly a proclamation that is near and dear to our community's heart. Because one of the things that we are endeavoring to do in our community is to make sure that our city is safe and intact, a safe city in Texas. We do that through various different ways. But one way in particular that we are able to accomplish this is by having men and women of courage and passion, working with our children and working with them in a way that will cause them to move forward in your life in a positive and constructive way. And so tonight, we honor the efforts of Coach Kevin Wilcox of the Lamarck High School men's basketball team. And so, Mr. Wilcox, would you please stand? Welcome to our chambers. Nice to meet you, sir. Office of the Mayor for the City of Lamarck proclamation, whereas we are here to pay honor and celebrate the outstanding coaching career of Kevin Wilcox. Whereas Coach Wilcox's exemplary dedication to the Lamarck High School basketball program since beginning his tenure with the Texas City Independent School District in 2016 has served both students and community at large. And whereas his commitment to the program developing exceptional student skills highlights the outstanding athletic ability that exists in Lamarck, as well as the importance of consistent active engagement with our community. Whereas this season, he reached 100 wins as a head coach and currently the high school varsity basketball team is ranked number seven in the state of Texas.
Woo-hoo!
Yes. Now, being resolved that the community of Lamarck celebrates this monumentous achievement of Coach Wilcox, and now therefore, we, the mayor and council, by virtue of our authority vested by the City of Lamarck, will hereby proclaim today as Kevin Wilcox Day.
Yes, yes, yes.
City of Lamarck, we hereby urge everyone in the community to commend and celebrate the achievements of Coach Wilcox in testimony where, with this my hand and the seal of the City of Lamarck, this 10th day of January, 2022, Keith Bell, Mayor, Mr. Wilcox. We cannot have the school board president and the superintendent with us tonight without having Coach Wilcox, if he so chooses, to give us some words.
First of all, I can get my, I wouldn't be here. I have, I've been working on it for a long time. But along the way, I've met a lot of good people along the way that got me to where I'm in. Growing up in Lamarck, one thing that was taught in my household was how to be humble, you know? And even though outside my household, it was growing up my dad, we started to be humble even outside of my household. When I grew up in Lamarck, everywhere I went, it was, it was tough, you know? You know, how to be right and how to, you know, handle right manners, you know, how to conduct yourself in front of people. And I try to, you know, stay today. Even though I stayed there, as a man, I made mistakes, but I made it through those mistakes. And hardworking, prepared parents, you can give them anything, and good ol' them.
Yeah.
Some other important people that helped me, that helped me get to this point, I want to bring my team to stand up. My brother Ted O.
And your president was here. I'm so sorry, Mr. Ted.
So if I have any board members here, can you stand and be acknowledged?
Yeah.
At local coordinate, Mr. Sean Evans. Like I say, that I'm glad that TCCI has allowed me to maybe the opportunity to serve my community and to put us back on the path.
Yes, sir.
So, also, Mr. Nicholson, our first. I have a lot of family members here, they've been very supportive and stuff, I really appreciate you being here. I gotta announce my wife.
Yes.
Without them, it's been a rough road. With y'all, all the way. Time that I'm coaching, not being around, they have to put up, I mean, well, they have. I don't like to be waiting long, but.
I don't have no. I don't have no.
So, I know when you advocate for kids, it takes, it takes a little bit longer.
Yeah.
Can't just go home with it when the bell rings.
Yeah.
It's gonna be your after hours. So, and then that, also I have my mom. I can hit, I can hit everybody.
Well, thank you guys for coming again. This all is a part of a safe city.
That's right.
This, this coach, here Coach Wilcox, Coach Evans, and many of the other folks in our community, Ms. Paul, Ms. Guarte, and Mr. Nicholson, all of these elements come together to make our city safer. And so we want to honor and inspire and encourage all of our community members to work with our young people because it is our young people that are in jeopardy, is that right? So we need to do, we intend to do, we endeavor to do more things like this so that we provide examples for people like me in this house to follow when we are working with our children. Now, we're moving from this topic to a, another topic of interest. And we're honoring our mail carriers. Our mail carriers. I think that's the mayor. And they do more than that. They are certainly integral parts of our life. I mean, if you have waited for the mailman or woman to show up, for all sorts of reasons, we, a lot of times, take that for granted. Although we don't want to do that today, and we don't want to do that this season. We want to honor them because they are important and an important part of our society. Is Ms. Griffin here? Time, or any other person that would, that has received this proclamation? Well, we will read it into the record and we will get with Ms. Griffin later, so that we, okay, very good. Office of the Mayor, City of Lamarck proclamation, whereas the United States Postal Service was initially founded in July, on July 26, 1775, by the second Continental Congress, Dick Franklin Sherkin as the first post-massaged general, whereas the United States Postal Service are the largest authorities in the country with over 34,000 locations and more than 630,000 floors, and the only delivery service that reaches every address in the nation. Whereas the history of the Lamarck Postal Service can be traced back to 1887. And whereas we recognize all mail carriers for their hard work and commitment to our community service, citizens of Lamarck, every day, regardless of weather. Now, being resolved that the community of Lamarck appreciates and celebrates the honorable individuals of the United States Postal Service. Now, therefore, with the mayor and city council by virtue of our authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, we hereby proclaim today as State Mail Carrier Day. And according, in accordance with the City of Lamarck, we hereby urge this one to be explained in this day of appreciation. And testimony where, with this my hand, the seal of the City of Lamarck, this 4th day of February. So it's not on your date, though. But this will be on the 4th of February. Testimony and where, Keith Bell, Mayor, let's give these mail carriers. Next time they come to your house late. Remember that proclamation. All right, very, very good, very good. We are now at item C, I believe. And that calls for an introduction, and we haven't seen these folks as of yet. But is there any person or persons here from the Houston-Galveston area council? Now? Okay. We don't see any persons here from the Houston area, Houston-Galveston area council, but Mayor Protem Compeyon is our representative on that particular, in that particular organization. You have something you'd like to add?
Yes, we've extended an invitation to representatives of the Houston-Galveston area council to come and address our residents as to the services. Historically, our community has, has perhaps been less than willing to access some of the services, but we have services that are available for our communities as a whole. So we're in the process of facilitating that presentation. As with many organizations, including our school district, we're challenged with COVID and that's not, that's also the case at HGC. So we'll continue working with the mayor and get them on our agenda for the presentation. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you there, Mayor Protem. Is there any persons here from Clear Channel Outdoor? Any persons online from Clear Channel Outdoor? I see, I thought I saw Mr. Alexander here from the College of the Mainland. Is, is Mr. Alexander, Earl Alexander here? We don't, we don't see anyone from the College of the Mainland. These items, Kiera, let's put these back on the agenda for next month. And let's make sure that we get some RSVPs from them. Very, very good. Item five, citizens' participation for hearing. Did you want to add something, Mayor Protem? I'm sorry.
Just on the College of the Mainland, once again, we're excited. They shared with us some retraining opportunities that are available as a result of monies that were received to that organization. And when we talk about retraining, we talking about funding that's available for plebotomy, for medical assistance, for data input. And there, there's a whole variety. If you go to the College of the Mainland site, that, that funding is available to, to, if you're interested in retraining and enrolling, and the College of the Mainland was going to be sharing that exciting information with, with us. And we'll follow up and make sure that that happens as well, too.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you, sir. Item five, citizens' participation, limited to three minutes, a person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with a city-related business who has signed up may speak to council on a specific agenda item, limited to three minutes. You should give the mayor your name and item you wish to speak about. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. If you are visiting with us via phone, you may press star six to mute or unmute your phone to participate. If you are visiting with us via Zoom through smartphone, tablet, or computer, the lower portion of your screen should have a microphone icon. If you would click on the microphone icon, you would be able to mute and unmute yourself. Once you have done that, I will call on you and you will be heard. Are there any persons via Zoom that are wishing to speak to this council tonight? Any persons via Zoom?
Hi, Mayor, this is Mandolin Salazar.
Yes, ma'am. You may speak.
Okay. Hi, my name is Mandolin Salazar, and I have a nonprofit that I operate there in the city of Lamarck. And I just wanted to come on here very briefly, Mayor, and as a matter of public record, and just to speak out about some concerns that I have. As you know, I do a lot of work in the community of Lamarck. Although I am not a resident of Lamarck, my organization and my church is there. And I have enjoyed working in that community. I've made some lifelong friends, I hope. I spent a lot of my time working and have helped, you know, families in need. I've cleaned up the streets of Lamarck. I have, you know, through my church, we have fed up to, you know, 101 and one, you know, big bank distribution, you know, we fed up to 115 people. As of last month, Mayor, I stopped attending church there because of safety concerns. Much of what I, of what is in support of what you, Mayor, came out and spoke out in last month's meeting. And I am saddened that individuals or an individual in the city of Lamarck has made it, taken it upon themselves to bully and harass many of us who are there and supporting your efforts, Mayor, and the council's efforts in making Lamarck a safe community. And, you know, this has just got to stop. It really, really does. I've never seen anything like this before. You know, I started working in that community of April of 2018. And for a very long time, I attended meetings, even had meetings with the, you know, previous chief of police and many others to, you know, echo the concerns of, you know, the need to make that community a much safer community. And so it was, I was very happy to see the selection of Chief Aragon, who's just been amazing and, and working with all of us and bringing us all together and helping with the commitment that the city of Lamarck has, that so many of Lamarck has made in the Safe City Initiative. And, you know, we have got to all just move past all this, this bullying and this, and this rhetoric. And it, it is just unnecessary. And, you know, everyday families that live in that community that I work with are just pretty much fed up with it. And sadly, I have become one of the citizens that have been a victim of constant harassment. And I just wanted to bring this to light because a lot of people themselves did not know this. I am, you know, loved and respected and cared by so many people there because I have, I have helped them. And I just really hope that we can all, you know, start focusing on working together.
Ms. Mandolin?
Yes, sir.
Do me a favor, finish your sentence and then we need the address of your nonprofit for the record because we've.
Okay, it is 509 Laurel Street, number 995.
Okay, okay, did you want to finish your sentence because?
Yes, yes, yes. And so anyhow, I am just wanting to let you all know that I see all of you and I support all of you. And there are many of us out in the community that support you. And we want you to continue to move forward, no matter what. We're all in this together with Mayor and, and with Chief Aragon and the council. And we are going to continue to work together because the citizens want this and making the community a safer place. And even though I don't call, you know, Lamarck my home, it is a community that I love and there are many people that I love and care about. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mandolin, thank you. All right, any other persons online wishing to speak? Any other persons online wishing to speak? Very good, are there, are there folks, Kiera, that have signed up? Okay, very good. Item six, consent agenda. Six A, December 28th, 2021, special city council minutes. I believe this was a tax form, is that correct? The special meeting before the tax form, very good, very good. I'll entertain a motion, council.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Item seven, new business. Seven A, discussion possible action regarding entering into a contract with the Galveston County Clerk and Galveston County Election Officer for the tax rollback and bond elections to be held May 7th, 2022. Kiera?
Thank you, ma'am, this is just standard operating procedure. We don't host our own elections, the county does it for, does them for us. So in January, every year before the 30th, that we have an election, we have to enter into the contract. By February, when all the cities call, their elections will know a little bit more about who's participating and the, depending on what's on the election, what's on the ballot and how many cities are participating, it'll determine how the cost is split. So we don't have the cost estimate at the moment, but it'll come to us at a later date.
Very good. Do you have a, a floor, a floor for the cost or a ceiling for these costs?
Typically, I would, but because we're not doing a general election, I do not at the moment.
Okay, okay. Council, I entertain a motion to approve, is there a second?
I second.
Are there any discussions or questions for Kiera?
Just a question.
Yes.
Here, following up on Mayor's question. He asked about a four, but for purposes of this motion, we have a budgeted amount on here of $25,500.
Yes, sir, that's the standard amount that we budget each year.
Kiera, have you seen it in your experience? Have you seen elections go over the 25,000 or?
Since we're not typically, unless we have like multiple elections, the difference this year is that we have two elections going on. So I'm not sure how they're gonna price it out because they're two separate elections. They're on the same ballot per se, but the tax rollback and the bond are two separate.
Sure. Very good. Just let us know as soon as you get more information. Please let the council know.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing no more discussion, we'll call a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Item seven B, discussion possible action regarding awarding professional services agreement for architectural services for facility assessment, programming, and design of the new public safety building. Chief Aragon?
Thank you, sir. On November, on November 29th last year, myself, Engineer Din, Kyle Hunter, our city attorney, my deputy chief, and I met. We met with, Din had recommended two architects, join our company, and the Macklemore Company. Had about an hour and a half discussion. We came up with choosing the Macklemore Luong Company. And the agenda form basically covered everything. The police station, close schedule, what we're gonna follow is the police station requires an assessment. I, I talked to Gus and a few others, Din, it's very much recommended to show just about how, what the state of, the status of our police station is and it's necessary, prevents further issues down the road. That's $50,000. Programming and bond preparation at $70,500. That would be basically returned if, if the bond does pass. The following costs do not get returned, 752, 250, and the procurement coordination. Just to, just, you know, not etched in stone. What we found out was you need about 347 square feet per, per employee. Using our employees, we're up at 52, you need around 18,000 feet. Din rec, Din suggests or stated that he estimates it would be around 20,000 square feet. which is more than double of what our police department is right now. So our motion, staff's motion is to award Macklemore Luong Architects LLC for the facility assessment, programming and design services for the new public safety building. Obviously, this is all in limbo regarding whether there is in fact a vote in the positive for the bondage coming up in May.
Yeah. Let's do this. Macklemore and Long. I missed that last name up. But would you all approach, please? And tell me how to pronounce your last name, sir. Again, I know you told me once before.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council. Last name is Long.
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 I'm so sorry. I butchered your name.
It's all right. It happens.
Couple of questions. I'm gonna open this up for, for questions from the council. Because this is something I'm sure that they may have questions about. But I did get a question from one of the members of our community as I walked in. Could you help us to understand this idea of fifty thousand in assessment and then the seventy thousand in planning? And the seven hundred fifty-two thousand, when would those monies be? When would they come due? What is the purpose of those monies? And how does that work with the overall idea of providing an option for our community on whether or not we want a new police station?
Sure. So Chief Aragon had pointed out, the existing police station is near and almost fifty years old. The fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollar facility assessment is to have us, our engineers, which includes the structural engineer, mechanical, electrical plumbing, civil, go in and do a full assessment of the building. We are looking for things that bring the building out of current code. What issues may be related to ADA? Looking at the integrity of the structure, does the building leak? Is the foundation cracked? We wanna look at what the existing program facility is. Is the facility functioning for what its current use is intended to be? There's, there's the, does it work? And then there's the, does it really work well? And so part of that fifty thousand dollars is to have all the engineers come in and start upon execution. Meet with staff, make sure we document all the existing building and provide a written report to council for your consideration. The written report documents everything that we just spoke about. And it gives you kind of a, an as-is condition of that building. So it's one thing to drive past and say, hey, it doesn't look great, you know, maybe it, it, you know, anecdotally doesn't feel right. But this report helps to codify those issues in writing and bring it to your attention for consideration. The, the programming part is, is kind of a separate effort, right? So you mentioned Chief, three hundred and forty-seven some square feet per person. What, what we typically try to do is we wanna understand what the current needs of station staff are. What, what are the institutions of the public safety efforts in the city? We wanna know what, what kind of the idea for the building is, right? You know, that, that existing station is a, is a beautiful big black hole. You know, as you think about community, public safety, community policing and looking into a building, it's gonna last for fifty years. And understanding that, that that building is gonna serve as a public safety building for residents who are not yet born and for staff who are not yet born. What, what are those goals in the future, right? And it may not be as cut in your eyes, saying, well, current staff times, you know, three forty. That effort to go meet with staff, meet with council, meet with public, you know, with community leaders takes time. And it's really us to listen to, soundboard, to understand what does this building really want to be, right? And we come back, we provide you with the full program. Here's what we've heard. Here's the wish list. Here's the want list. Here's the budget that has been established. Here are our recommendations for how we can consolidate square footage, how we can bring these together, how we can drive efficiency. And here are things that we just need executive decision on, right? That effort is separate than just going and looking at what you currently have today, right? What you currently have today is a function of, you know, ideas of policing from nineteen sixties, right? We really wanna look at what, what does twenty twenty-one require and what does twenty seventy, you know, require? In terms of how those monies are spent, as architects, we build in arrears. We don't ask for upfront money. We don't ask you to cut us a check, you know, on the day you issue that contract. So we will start, let's assume it's approved this evening. We meet with staff, we put a schedule together, we, we provide those services. And then on a monthly basis, we will invoice the city for that. The final deliverable for all of that, leading up to this May seventh bond election, is an approval by the council of what exactly goes to bond. And in part of what Chief Aragon said is it really depends on whether the residents want this, right? Our job is to help bring the ideas of what that building is into a, a language that residents can understand, what staff can actually, council can understand, right? What does it look like? How does it lay out? What are the ideas? We, we generate those documents. We will work council to conduct meetings, conduct public meetings to help get that idea out there so that everybody feels that they're, they're part of this project, which really is a community project, right? So that those funds take us through May. I believe the bond election is slated for May seventh, so depending on what, May seventh happens. If it's a thumbs up. We come back to council, second Monday, council says, hey, bond is approved. And you guys authorize us to proceed. So the, the latter part of that funding, that's seven hundred and forty-two, never take. I don't ever wanna come back here and ask you guys for money again. That's not the way we like to do business. It doesn't instill trust. What we tend to do is give a range, right? We think that the station is somewhere between twenty and twenty-four thousand, between ten and twelve million. We wanna make sure that we collect all of that, right? So the number we gave you is, is continued on staying within that realm. That gets us through starting design, working continuously with Chief Aragon, council, with municipal forces involved, to fully develop that building. We help you guys choose a contractor and a delivery method, whether that's a construction manager at risk, competitive proposal. However, you guys would like to do that, we help you solicit that. We bring the contractor on board and then we get into construction as soon as possible. So our services, I believe in our proposal, go all the way through June of twenty twenty-four. And that's kind of how far ahead we're thinking to get this project through derivative funding.
So. I'm sorry, were you, were you done?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, so let me try to, try to put it for, to us in layman's terms, in terms of fifth grader can understand. So our building is fifty years old plus. It is about nine thousand-ish?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five hundred square feet. We found that we need double the size of that. Not because the officers just want that, but because standards says that functionality for our law enforcement community is optimal at this particular square footage. So what you're doing now, the fifty thousand dollars is for you to then assess the condition of this building. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
The good, the bad, the ugly. Foundation cracks, not big enough, mold, mildew, whatever.
Correct.
The seventy-five thousand, if you will, seventy thousand is then for you to go back and begin to design what a new station would look like.
It is to work with council and staff to develop the program.
The program.
Of what should go in that building.
Okay.
And roughly where it should go.
Okay.
And conceptually what it may look like.
Okay, okay. So that, that's part of the planning phase.
Correct.
Okay. And then there is a seven hundred and some odd thousand dollar number.
Correct.
That happens if the bond is approved.
Correct.
If the bond is not approved, then that doesn't, there's no reason to have that.
Correct. Let me reassess.
Okay. Does that make sense to everybody? There's a person here tonight who asked a question. Mr. Pennington, did I, did, did I get him to answer the questions that you had, sir? Okay. Now, the other thing about this council and this government is that we're transparent and we're open. And so what we do is we allow our citizens, if they choose to, to address council and persons that are presenting in the moment, in real time, right? Because that's, that's how we want to, to provide transparency in government. And so let me stop here and let me ask the community. Are there any persons in this community that are here physically present or that are with us online that have any questions for this architect? And the plans or the process that we are using to move forward with a bond to see whether or not we want to build a new police station? Any questions? Yes, ma'am. Would you, Ms. Ginger, would you, would you approach so that everyone can hear you? I know, ma'am, but the, the thing is so that the people at home can hear you through the microphone. Yes, ma'am. I'm so sorry.
So I just have a question. It's probably a stupid question. I don't know.
No, ma'am.
I'm asking it. So it's, I totally agree. They need a new police station.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been, it's horrible. But is it a hundred and twenty thousand for an estimate and a design? Is that what?
For fifty plus seventy?
For an estimate and a design?
For assessment. Assessment and a. To garner consensus on what goes in that.
And so the, the reason, if you wanna speak to that, if you wanna speak to that, but the reason I, I suspect the reason is we need to make sure that we understand what we have. And, and so let me, let me let you speak and try to help Ms. Ginger with what would that normally cost? I mean, how, is, is that a, is that a normal range fee? Is that high? Is that low?
Sure.
Number one. And then number two, let me ask you this. Would we want to build a police station? Would we want to move forward with millions of dollars without doing our due diligence, diligence with tens of thousands of dollars?
That's a, that's a nice tip. So let's go back. It, as, as I understand it, this is a, a public safety building, right? And, and the, the nuance and nomenclature is very important, right? It is obviously a police station. And I, I think that's very important because you design police stations, right? And a police station has certain connotation. I think in, in part of the last ten years or so, the notion of a public safety building is really important in its distinction that a public safety building is a, is a safety building and it's a community building at the same time. And, and those programs sometimes don't necessarily align intuitively in, in people's heads, right? Why would I wanna have a, a community meeting on a police station? That doesn't make any sense. I think as, as, as we've seen transitions in policing and the notion that community policing is the best type of policing, having a, a facility that allows the public to interact with those that keep them safe is very important. And what that program consists of is different from community to community. You know, in, in other states that have done, we have a very large and very prominent public meeting space, right? Where you might have a voice catcher board. If, if the police, public safety or a public outreach group decides to have a, a public safety seminar, right? This is where you would do it, right? And it, it tends to bring the community and the policing efforts together in a place that, that is maybe safer and feels more approachable. They just think it's a police station, right? Those are two very different ideas. So I, I think that, that what, what we're doing and how we figure out the way we charge is we think about how much effort does it really take to come down here and hear everybody's opinion, right? There's, there's no one person, we don't come with a preconceived notion of, well, here's exactly what you need. Let's just go right in and make a vote. Every community is different. Every community is very unique. The, the challenges the city of La Marque faces are very different than the challenges of the city of Houston, the city of Katy, the city of Sugarland. And the only way to know those are to talk through them, to think through them, to be guided through that, that effort. And so what, what we're doing as, as part of that second part is coming down here, we're meeting with you guys and whoever else you want to invite into that conversation. And so open public meetings are, are, are great when they're controlled, for sure. If it turns into, well, it's a lot of talking, it doesn't really help. But they can be managed, right? And I think as part of the commitment to transparency, having that feedback is very good. And it's something that we anticipate that we want to be a part of and that we can help bring together, right? So when, when, when somebody would have an idea in their head about, hey, I really like this, but I don't really know what to say about it. It's our job to help, help codify that, right? Hey, you know, what about this? And that's really what's, what's baked into that, that, that effort. And so I would say that if, if you're going to spend twelve million dollars, spending a couple thousand dollars, tens of thousands of dollars, is money well spent. You, you need to know this before you move and engage the rest of the consultant team to really finalize the building, right? Because at that point, time is of the essence. You have a bond, residents are expecting something. We need to get them the building that moves this ball forward. So that's, that's what I would say is, is, is how we approach these projects.
Sure, sure. Council, do you have any questions? Casey? I see you waving. Go ahead.
Yeah, I do. I have a couple of questions. Hi. And I'm sorry, because it's Zoom, I couldn't really hear your last name either, so I'm gonna make you say it again.
Luong.
Can you spell it?
L U O N G.
Luong. Hello, hi. All right. So I had two questions. I think it's, it's not just for you, but it's really out there. So I remember last year, I learned that our police department had at some point within the last few, quite recent years, done their own internal assessment of that building and their needs. Now, my recollection is, you know, I, I learned about it at a police union meeting and the report was shared with me by Officer Gandy. I obviously cannot, I can't see the whole room, so I don't know if you're there, Forrest. But, you know, they kindly shared that with me. And in my recollection, it was mainly an assessment of like what the police department themselves, you know, the staff and everyone serving felt that they needed in, to, in order for that environment to better suit the job. I don't believe that it had any architectural assessment to it. Is there anyone in the room who can confirm that or for me?
Repeat your question, Casey.
So.
We can hear it.
Basically, I was bringing up the fact that I know within the last four years or so, I believe, there has been, there was an assessment of that building. I, when I learned about it last year, you know, I don't think that report had ever made it to us. I believe it was the police department doing their own internal assessment of like, hey, this is what we need because this, this station is, you know, not up to par. Here's basic things that we need a little more up to par. We talked about it during workshops, but I'm just curious. Basically, all of that is to get to, I wanna make sure that the police department is behind all of this. And, you know, I remember them feeling a few budget workshops ago, a couple of years ago, like they went to all this work to present to us, here are some things that we need just to bring this, this, this building to a higher level. And because of various reasons, what ended up happening was we did this enormous assess, like larger assessment and came up with this many, many, many millions of dollars, like municipal complex proposal. And all of it was way too big for us to even approach. And I remember the police department feeling like, sheesh, all we wanted was like not a horrible police station. It doesn't sound like that's where we're going. I'm just curious if members of the police department and Chief Aragon, maybe this is for you, have been involved with these preliminary discussions.
Council, I'm not familiar with that assessment. I've, I've heard about it. Deputy Chief Wagner, if he's on Zoom, maybe he can answer that substantially for you. Chad, are you there?
I don't see Chad on here.
Okay.
Casey, are you referring to the twenty nineteen study that was done on the police department operations overall that was, that was not given to us until recently?
No, no. It's, it's a similar study. It was a building study. Is Forrest there?
No, he's not.
Is Andy there? Okay, I saw him earlier. Maybe I thought he was there. Okay, well, um. No, it was a, a separate assessment. It was something that they had come up with. We talked about it a little bit during our twenty twenty-one budget workshop.
Hold on just a minute, Casey. Lieutenant Price, would you come forward, please? You and Sergeant Crowe are probably the folks that have been with the department the longest that are here tonight. Do you remember? Was there an internal?
I vaguely remember talking.
I vaguely remember talking about it. Uh, I wasn't involved with assessments, so I don't.
Okay. So it was something that may have been done internally?
Yes, anything that would have been done would have been done. There would have been nobody hired. Nobody hired.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Sergeant Crowe, you, do you agree? I mean?
I was a part of that committee that we were discussing about the, the, we were discussing about the, uh, evidence room, property room and overall police park.
Okay. How, how far did, did, was that, was that internal meetings?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So there we are, Casey.
Okay, good. So I just wanted to know, was it just internal stuff? Did they hire a con, a consultant? Cool. My next question is, um, one of the biggest things that jumps out at me about this is thinking about the municipal court and all of the ways that, you know, we've talked about their needs in particular and how, um, it really makes more sense for the municipal court to not be located in the same location as the police department. And that's why they use this room, but they've had all kinds of additional needs. I feel like we've talked about the municipal court's needs many times and I don't, I'm not quite sure we've met them. And what I don't want to happen with a, this building assessment is for Muni Court to get left behind.
So, so to add to that, I, part of our charge is to engage with the municipal court staff as well. And then in this assessment, uh, in order to come back with options for counsel of here's, here's just the, uh, the police portion of public safety and here's what municipal court would look like. Uh, and then there are options within that about how much square footage the building wants to be and whether or not they are or are not included in that bond referendum.
Okay. Okay, cool. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then lastly, I, I know you went over it, but, um, I still need a little help understanding the numbers that are in our, our packet here. Just so that I feel fully solidified on what it is we would be signing off on today.
The council beckons, because that has the actual numbers on the slip sheet. I don't have a copy of it. Right, okay. So I, I think what's, what's very important is understand it's, it's a, and I'm, I'm looking at you, but you're behind me.
It's okay. I knew.
I really am looking at you. So the, the, the facility assessment goes in and it looks at what is the condition of the physical structure, right? What is the building doing, right? Is standing? Does it work? Um, we, we don't get into operational costs, uh, but we can opine on, hey, systems of this type are typically this much more expensive than systems of that type. Uh, we, we, we take that and we, we also look at the existing program. What, what is in that building, right? Uh, and we've done enough of these that we can benchmark, hey, uh, a city of this size with a commissible police department using modern codes has a station of this size. And so what we do is like, here's the building, here's what it's doing, uh, here's the program, here's what it is doing, here's what it's not doing. And, and that is the snapshot of, of what currently is up the street, I think that way. Um, the, the programming and bond preparation is the second part of all this, right? So having, um, any city department self-assess, uh, I'm not surprised that you get a, a very big wish list, right? Um, our, our job is to understand that, that the city has a finite amount of funding, that they're going to ask their residents to approve. And we need to work backwards into that finite amount of funding and work with staff to understand here's, here's what you're, what you told us you wanted. Here's what we believe you can afford. And as part of that, uh, with our, uh, um, relationships with other police departments, we, we take, uh, staff, we can take, uh, Chief Aragon's staff on tours of other stations. Here's how your counterparts are doing it in a different city. Here's, here's how, how it does or does not work. And, and sometimes, uh, that, that makes you think about, you know, different ways to go about maybe the same process that might require less square footage. Can we combine these two things into one? Uh, certain things are untouchable, right? Evidence storage room must be this. There's, there's no way around it, right? Um, but as you talk about, you know, how does report writing work? How does roll call work? Um, there are ways for us to, uh, share other experiences of other departments, uh, of how it is done efficiently, right? Uh, and so that, that big part about that program is, is going through the wish list, the want list and, and fitting it into a box that is sellable to the community, right? Uh, this, this idea is this much money. Um, and as part of that, we, we also begin to work through what the building looks like. Um, there, there are development standards that we look at. Um, we look at, you know, whether or not there are existing architectural precedents within the city, right? So certain cities have very specific styles. I want all of our buildings to look like this. Uh, so we go through, here are the different options of what that might look like. Um, so we, 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 we attack both the programmatic side, uh, and the architectural side that gives us a package, um, that we then take to the residents, you know, for bond, right? Uh, so that's, that's kind of how those, those two distinct tasks are broken up and they happen simultaneously. So we have a team that goes and does the assessment at the same time to do the program. This is going to have to happen very fast, right? We're already in the middle of January. Um, and with May seventh, that means council has to approve the bond in April. So we're, you know, three and a half months, we're fifteen weeks away from this. This, this is very quick. Uh, and so we have to dedicate a significant amount of resources to coming out here and making sure that the timeline does not shortchange the effort, right? Because that doesn't do anybody any good. Um, and this is a very important process, has to be done, right? Uh, so that's, that's how the two numbers are broken up.
Okay. And accord, so this, so basically, by setting this process in motion, we're agreeing to a ra, a sum of around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Wh- whether we're not, whether the bond is passed or not, right? Because that's what, that's what it takes to get to that point. Okay. And then if the bond passes, can you talk about those two numbers after that?
Well, yeah, so if, if the bond passes, um, and the city moves forward, we've gone ahead and provided the, the fee structure for how we get into the future, right? Uh, and so we, we, we have to then mobilize a team of probably twenty people. Uh, it'll take about eight months, six to eight months to go through and create, uh, what will eventually be hundreds of documents that move us through into the construction process, right? Um, we, we have to generate the drawings, the specifications. Uh, we help solicit the contractor, uh, we begin the work with that contractor to really set this process in motion. Uh, and so the, the, the backend amount of resources that it takes to actually bring one of these buildings to life is, is quite a bit. Um, it is a fully dedicated staff that gets us all the way through 2024. So we're anticipating, uh, uh, depending on which site the city ultimately selects. Uh, but it, we are, we're anticipating eighteen months of construction after the drawings are completed in a best case scenario at the end of 2022. Uh, so we're thinking that this, this takes us to July of 2024. The F F and E procurement and coordination portion, public safety buildings are, are F F and E heavy buildings. And that's furniture, fixtures and equipment. Um, uh, police officer needs are very specific. Um, movable file cabinets, ammunition storage, gun storage, gun lockers, uh, equipment lockers. Uh, if there's a SWAT component, there's a SWAT locker, um, Sally ports. These, these are very specific needs that have very specific equipment that we don't recommend you buy on Amazon. Um, and so our, our job is to work with you. We bring you the vendors that we work with, we solicit bids, we go through a bidding process with vendors, you know, from the chief's chair all the way down, you know, to what finishes are in the lock, what, what furniture is in the lock. Uh, and so we, we provide that upfront, uh, and, and that is a full-time interior designer. To give these bids, get them approved, uh, ultimately have them go through purchasing in the city and have them installed. So those, those are two, in architecture parlance, the basic services of, you know, what do I pick up with a pen and what do I draw? And the supplementary services, what additional effort is needed to bring this all the way to the end? So some cities will do their own F F and E procurement. City of Houston does this, Texas A and M does this, larger institutions that have the staff to do this. Um, in discussions with, with Din, uh, his recommendation was that we include this service, uh, as perhaps the city is not uh, staffed to have somebody full-time go and do this. Uh, so that's what those two numbers represent.
So I, I do have a question. Hi, I'm Councilwoman Kimberly Yancy. Um, so if the bond does not pass, the preliminary work that you do can be used, uh, again, the, for the hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we are paying, similar to, we have plans on the record uh, for our downtown area that we can use. So your plan can still be utilized because we're purchasing that. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Yes, that, that is correct. So, so the, the information that is given to the city, uh, here is the program that we've worked through, it is yours.
Okay.
You are free to do with it, um, and, and pick up that process again. So, um, I believe Texas statute, if a bond fails, there is a, you know, statutory timeframe that's in there. You can't just go back and ask your residents every week. Um, so, you know, what, what, what I've done in the past, it's only happened once. Um, you do a post-mortem, why didn't it fail? What was missing? What, what didn't work? Was it too expensive? Um, was there, you know, lots of little voices or one big voice, right? What, what happened? Um, and then decide, okay, well, is it a retooling and we go ask again in, in the, in the next election cycle, potentially in November? Uh, or do we need to table this, you know, for up to a year? That, that would ultimately count as a decision on how to move forward.
But what you're creating will be something that we can showcase to the residents of what it will look like.
Absolutely.
And what we, okay, that's, I'm an educator, so I believe we have different types of learners in our city, right? And so we have to make sure that they'll, that, that what you're going to provide will be a visual of, of, of how our new substation will look like. Hence why we're, I'm, I'm a former director of public housing too, so I'm very aware of, uh, what it takes to pay for your type of services that are very specific and professional and basically true. So for those people that don't understand that this is, this is a product that we'll be able to use in the future, whether or not the bond passes. I do pray that it passes because we do, I, I officers deserve better than, than what we have provided for them. And this is a new Lamarck with intelligent, brilliant, amazing citizens. And so we want to make sure that we give them all the tools necessary to do their jobs effectively. So I look forward, I, I, I'm going, I'm in, I'm, I am in it. I want to see what you produce. I've looked at our packet. Uh, you come highly recommended. And so I'm excited to see what our new substation, not substation, police station can look like.
Public safety building.
Public safety building. Yes, yes.
My mother was a teacher in ALEP by a deep for thirty years. Yeah, I, I, I am a very visual learner. My sister most definitely is not, and that's very frustrating for me. Uh, so, so, and I'm glad you brought this up, right? Part of this program exercise in working with council and your staff is how do you want us to engage your citizens, right? Um, and, and some just need to hear it, some want to see it, some want to touch it. We got to figure out how to do that. It's, it's our job to help you get that bond passed in the way in which conveys that message to your residents, right? And, and so there's, there's a lot of work that goes in to bring that. It, it, it starts with transparency, it starts with engagement, it starts with, it, it ends with that final product that hopefully we've brought everybody along the way, you know, in the community. So that when we get to May seventh, this isn't a surprise. It was, oh, yeah, I remember hearing about this in March. Oh, here's what it looks like now. That's, that's our job to bring to reality for you.
Very good. Uh, Ms. Carlson.
I've got a few questions.
Yes, sir.
Um, to answer some of the public's questions. Um, some of the stuff that's been put out there so far is they were selected by themselves. We selected, that is not true, correct?
Let, let's clear this up. Uh, I'm, I'm glad that we're all here so that we all can hear this together. Uh, it is actually, and I want everybody to hear this, it is actually against state law to have architectural firms bid on projects. Gus, would you enlighten them, please?
Ye- yes, Mayor. Um, and as Councilwoman Yancy said earlier, um, architects are a professional service. Um, under state law, the, the government code, uh, says that municipalities are not allowed um, to look, to accept the low bid for state, for professional services, one of which is architecture, which Maclemore Long will be providing to the City of Lamarck. As Chief Aragon said, um, the city engineer, Ben Ho, um, along with Chief Aragon, um, I believe Deputy Chief Wagner as well, interviewed multiple architectural firms in accordance with state law. They chose one to present to council. Um, the contract, the contract price has been negotiated and in accordance with the Professional Services Act for purchasing by municipalities, staff is presenting that to council for council's approval.
Okay, so there was more than just?
There were multiple, there were, there were multiple architects, architectural firms that were interviewed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Council.
Um, are we looking at the same location as the PD now or are we looking at a new location?
Uh, Councilman Carlson, we, there was a lot of thinking on that issue. And because I've seen it done before in my career, um, it looks like it'd go right behind it, right directly behind it. Then looked at a, um, we talked about it, going up. And there's enough room, so that's pretty good. We could just operate until it's built and move right into it. And we had us all over the city and Mayor's, uh, vision was, you know, downtown and others. And I think that's what it's going to be right out.
Yeah, so our, our charge is to work with the city engineer in helping finalize the selected site. Um, part of what we want to make sure, because this is Lamarck and because of the code requirements for a public safety building, you need to be two foot above the benchmark flood elevation. We want to find sites that, uh, you know, in the event of another flood are high enough. It is a critical building for all the obvious reasons. Um, and so that will factor into how the site is selected, right? Um, if it, if it comes that the, your site that, you know, you, you have to fill with twenty feet of dirt versus a site that's full of one, that, that makes a lot of difference, right? So, um, in, in, in our world for how the hundreds are written, it is, it is, um, if you stick to site, right, we, we're waiting for the city to choose a site and then we will then begin to program on top of that. Um, and we've done it any number of ways. We can do a, a virgin site, uh, which has all the benefits of being somewhere else. Um, that has procurement issues and a lot of other, uh, i- items behind it. Uh, working in an existing site is certainly very cost effective when it's done correctly. Um, we can, we can look at how the building sits behind and then, you know, if the current facility is torn down or integrated, all those things could be assessed, you know, as, as we move in parallel with the city.
Okay, that's, I want to make sure we get them what they want, but we do it the most cost-effective way.
Yeah.
It looks like, um, if you build in the back of PD, that area, uh, the PD would be raised. It's just, you know, thought and that would be the parking area.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, if, if we do have to change locations, I would hope that we contact the EDC and have them procure the, the land for us. Because they do have that op, that option to get that land for.
Yeah.
Um, and then just the last thing I have, I would like to recommend before we, before we hit the taxpayers with the bonds, anything that we do for the police department, we go out for the grants and try to get those grants to make the impact less for the citizens. So I hope that we, as an administration, strive for those grants.
Absolutely.
To loo, to lessen the blow. So.
Absolutely.
That's all the questions I have and thank you.
Let me say this, uh, one, uh, one of the things that, that when, when, when you visit with the Economic Development Corporation, they prefer a downtown site because they are developing, are, are attempting to develop uh, our downtown area, redevelop it. And so that to them is essential, uh, that, that we have a, a police station in that downtown vicinity. Secondly, uh, to, to Councilmember Carlson's point, we have never stopped. It has, this has nothing to do with what we're talking about, but let me just say it. We have never stopped looking for grants, grant funding. Uh, and we will, uh, as far as my vote and my direction as one member of this council, we will never stop looking for grant funding to augment what we're trying to do as a community. It does not replace, it cannot replace our obligation, uh, to provide services for one another. But it can augment that, right? We can, we can, we can make those services better. And so thank you for that, Councilmember Carlson. Um, Mayor Protem, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Thanks. Well, um, you're the principal, Alex Luong.
Alex Luong, yes.
You are, okay. And, uh, I was checking, I was, I was hearing Councilwoman Yancy, I guess I'm best describe myself as being part of all Lamarck, so I'm slow. I'm very slow, okay? And so I'm asked a lot of questions and try to. And so I'm ask a lot of questions and and try to be visual as you give me your answers. I want to pick up on um something that uh Councilmember McCullough. Was inquiring about. The uh in your proposal. You indicate that your planning does not incorporate. An area for the uh. What do you call it? The.
E O C.
The is that the U F C? That's the emergency operations. Is is that? But we don't have emergency operations over there, do we at the police department?
So so as I understand.
No, the. You're talking about emergency management versus the dispatch system.
So as I understand, the the new fire administration building. Is what is intended to function as the command center in an emergency operation.
Yeah.
That that was built into its functionality. Uh so in the event of a hurricane, the city. Uh staff and headquarters move to fire admin building.
So I I I guess in my world, it's the emergency management's center in terms of. Emergency operations, just a E O C. Okay. Now, but but the design planning is does envision. The dispatcher that we have already at the police department. There within this this facility. Okay, so that is.
Yes.
Okay. That's number one. The uh. You and this is just tracking and I'd asked the uh. Mayor Bill before for clarity. This council has not approved the bond election yet.
That's correct.
This is just preliminary discussion. And a lot of this discussion is a carryover from. Uh both the the time that I was involved in my election. That there is a need, a long term need for a new police building. And none of the previous councils had stepped up to take some first steps. In terms of even doing any sort of planning. That uh whether or not it would be paid for by a bond or not or bond, but at least as council person. Nancy was saying, it's very clear that we'll have documents in place that we can utilize in the future. Whatever we have to do on this in this area. I have that. Your background, do you have? Have you done planning for other cities of a public safety building?
Yes, sir.
You have?
Yes, sir.
And uh so let me ask you something. Just curious, what's so different between planning a public safety building, say in. In a si- well, a a city of similar size. To developing a whole new set of plans for us.
I'm not sure I follow.
Well, if you've got already that you've done some work in the past in developing a public safety center or building. You've you've already done a lot of the the work that's associated with that. How can we? Benefit from any sort of cost savings from work that you've previously done for another municipality? As opposed to starting from scratch. I mean, and I come back from a my father was a builder. That's kind of what we did, you know, you took an existing plan and you. Maybe.
So the 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 program components. We come with a recommended program. Here here's here's what we've done in the past. Here are the components that we've put in in other buildings. And it's ultimately up to uh chief and staff to decide, yes, we want those or no, we do not. Uh and and so that that's where we start. Um let's take a let's take jail standards as an example, right? So Texas jail standards are very specific. How big uh does a cell have to be? Uh a municipal holding facility is not a jail. In theory, it doesn't have to comply. Certain municipalities want that and we bring that to them. How is it arranged? How does how does your jailer operate? Um how do you separate sexes? A lot of that is specific to the culture of the station and the institutions. How do you guys? We don't want to give you. What you don't want to do is inherit somebody else's design that was that was intended for different modus operandi. And uh part of our job is to is to understand how Lamarck PD operates, right? Um I I'll give you another example. Um the public safety officer, the 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 public safety. Oh, what's the word I'm looking for? The public information officer. Where does that gentleman sit? How important is he within the department? In certain stations, his office is right up front in the nonsecure area. Uh he's the guy or or gal that has all the marketing material, runs all of the um. Public engagement activities. In in other settings, uh it's actually just a CID officer that does it on the side. Where does that go? How how do you want your residents to interact with your staff? So understanding the components does not necessarily give you the building. Because the building needs to be arranged specifically for how how your facility wants to operate, how how your staff wants to operate.
Okay, thanks. So having said all that. How do you come up with in this course of this presentation? A figure of ten million dollars for this facility?
That was given to us.
That so so we've already determined there's a value chief of uh of ten million dollars. What wouldn't? I'm I'm curious about that figure.
It it was just an estimate. Uh then from the top of his head, he said ten to twelve, fourteen million.
So would would it perhaps be a bit farm a bit accurate or just for help to say perhaps? Our upper end is ten million dollars?
Absolutely.
Okay, as opposed to saying here, because for me, that's kind of letting. We've got ten million dollars.
Yeah, no, no. So so that establishes the the upper bookend. Uh our our goal is to never exceed that. Um I would say that. Public safety buildings are inherently very expensive as fire stations. They are they are equipment intensive. They are specifically. Um um hardened, which adds a lot of cost. I would say that, and I think everybody's, you know, experienced this in the last three years, pegging numbers down is is very, very difficult. Um cost data that we have uh even from twenty nineteen projects is fungible. Um it it's hard to pin that down. So where when we talked with Dan, what we did is we just got check it, right? Does that make sense? It's twenty thousand square feet. At ten to twelve, sound right for a facility of this size. Um we did our homework with our contractors and and how we've built these in the past, and that seems to check out. Uh what we absolutely do not want to do is come back with a facility that's fourteen point five million dollars because that's not going to go anywhere. Nobody benefits from from producing um a a design that is not passable in bond. Uh ideally, we we want to be in in that nine point five to ten million dollar range, right? That's that's that sweet spot. And understanding that as a public building with public money. Their tax dollars is very important and we we take that to heart absolutely in these buildings.
It's our tax dollars altogether.
Yes, sir.
So Mr. Long, uh at the beginning of your presentation, you said all existing buildings. And that threw me for a loop. We only have one building, correct? You're you're only talking about one building. What are you referring to? Would say. On by your own. There's there's no others. So uh and for. Just a question for clarity. The city owns just the city hall? Is that our our property? The city hall. If this is, is this our property, this building as well?
Yes.
And the fire station next door. That's those that's okay. And uh. And following up on tell the personal college once again, the does this envision? Because I remember when we had a discussion with the municipal court folks, does it envision? Having perhaps the municipal court there or?
Yes, so our our job is to go in work through programming with courts. What do you need? How many judges you have? How big is your record storage? Where is your bailiff? How do you want to treat jurors? We want to come back with that program. And then ultimately it's council's decision to say, hey, you know, A plus B or just A, which which direction you would like to go. And then we start into the bond preparation documentation.
And a lot of this, let let me let me jump in here, Joe, so we can we can get some clarity. A lot of this. Uh what what Mayor Protem is asking will come from that second phase of interaction with the community. The 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 law enforcement community, the council, so that we can begin to form this idea of what this this building, this facility would potentially look like, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And and yes, yes, sir.
Yes, because of coming, you know, just rough figures, just. Calculating it, and I know you're interested in this concept. Three hundred forty seven square feet per employee times fifty two, you get eighteen thousand forty four square feet. That's about four three fifty to four hundred dollars per square foot. You do the math. It's about um. Seven point two million. Then you got to add what they call F F E. F F E is furniture fixtures and equipment. That's another one point eight to two million. You got around ten million. That's just rough.
So the number didn't come out the air. It came from it came from.
I mean, uh we just to be sure, he said between ten and twelve.
A- absolutely. We want to make sure that we're crystal crystal clear so that there are any manipulations of any information. So thank you for that clarity.
And I think this is my last question, just for clarity. You, the. Interstate manager Ergon indicated that perhaps there's a realistic possibility of constructing this new building. At the existing site, of course, that would save site costs, uh obviously. Now, the question I have is, is there any thought in terms, is there any? Possibility or does there even exist the possibility of in some way utilizing the existing building? In in terms of this of this construction process and then expanding it from there.
I've I mentioned that that the meeting and it depends on his assessment. It might not be.
It it depends, right? Yeah. If I would say that that first and foremost, it's all about the flood elevation, right? If the building is too low. Um which might be the case, it might not be. We we don't necessarily know yet. Um I would say it's very difficult to salvage the existing structure. Um let's assume the building is high enough for a moment. Uh if the bones are in good condition. Uh if the foundation is in good condition, there's a definite possibility you could strip that building down to steel. And and add on to it and build on to it. Um there is a a, I mean, from. From an environmental perspective, there is a real push towards that to reuse old structures. It's better for the environment. It lowers construction cost. There are additional risks because you don't necessarily know what you're going to get until you start pulling skin off. Um but it it can be done, and there are very successful projects that do do that. Um it it's worth the investigation into it. Uh we can certainly bring that optionality through the programming process. Uh as we get started moving forward.
One last comment, just historically, in this area, bonds do not have a great passing rate. And uh we're not a wealthy community. We're a community of hardworking individuals. We're humble. We have great spirit, great support for our community. And but fundamentally, I know all of us, all of us are going to take a close look in terms of what this would represent. In terms of our increases bottom line to our taxes. And uh so that's something that uh is very, very serious. I'm something very aware of and all of us are. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Long? Miss Miss Cross. Yes, ma'am. Come on, Miss Manette.
I I just wanted to to clarify that, you know, having worked as a subject matter expert in building buildings in the Texas Medical Center. That the percentage of your architectural is less than ten percent, like more like nine percent. And I think that's usually pretty reasonable for that magnitude of a project of ten million.
So we're looking at ten million and we're looking at basically one point two uh hundred twenty five thousand, hundred twenty thousand. Is that what you're suggesting or?
It'd be eight eighty if you're adding in the the.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
As opposed to the ten ten million, then you're at eight point eight percent.
Very good. Very good. Miss Cross? Could you approach and give uh Carrie your your full name and your address?
Alexa Cross, six three three Sable Terrace Lane.
Thank you, Miss Cross. Miss Manette, you can approach. I'm so sorry. You have to keep coming back to the podium, but. Yeah, but the people in the the people in the. Miss Manette, would you approach us closer so the people can? The people and YouTube, they need to hear you.
Me too, Ginger. I want to hear you.
Back to Gus. Um you said there were multiple firms that. Bid or whatever you called it on this. Is that right?
That were interviewed, yes. I I I don't know. I was not involved in those interviews. Um that's us. That's a staff issue, not a legal issue, an operations issue.
So you as being the fire, the police chief, you can get this, right? They cannot get this. Is that will that?
That uh I can, so the municipality as a whole may not solicit. Bids for this type of work. Under the Professional Services Act. We may not award a contract on the basis of competitive bids is what state law says. So what's done and what was done in this case is um the city engineer, in this case, Den Ho. Went out and found identified various architects for provide this work. Review their qualifications, met with Chief Aragon, Miss Dan, I believe. Deputy Chief Wagner sat in all of that to interview those firms. And then provide a recommendation of the firm that they chose to the council.
Okay, so the engineer went out and found people to.
The city, the city engineer, yes.
Okay, and. The fifteen years and the but this particular company that you have?
We started in June twenty.
June twenty twenty one. Okay, um. And again, you're to assess and design. You're not actually building.
Miss Ginger, address.
Eight oh nine Grassy Mill Trail. Manette, M A N E T T.
Very good. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am. Good, good. Come on. Just make sure you speak it to the mic, Miss Ginger.
So what y'all are gonna vote on, I guess, tonight is whether or not this company is the company that does this.
That's going to do the assessment and the programming. And and then we have to wait to see if the bond's gonna be passed.
And how many companies were? Like him and two other companies or I'm I'm just curious, how many people came to you and said, hey, we want to do this?
Yes, can we?
Yes.
Whoever.
How many companies?
We had two. We had another company in this one. And they were recommended by our a attico engineer who's worked.
The city.
Who has bu- bu- buildings and so forth, has engineered buildings.
Mr. Long, would you approach? La- last question for clarification. You said to Miss Manette that you have, you've been working in this industry for fifteen years?
Yes, sir.
Would you would you share with us exactly the company that you work for and what types of work that you all did?
So I I won't I won't share my previous company. Uh like if you get to. But I I used to work the largest and the oldest architecture firm in the city of Houston. You can look that up. Um I was an associate principal there uh for over nine years. Um and we specialize in doing exactly this kind of work.
So you work for the largest and oldest architectural firm in the city of Houston for fifteen years. You're the associate principal and specialized in doing this kind of work? Okay.
I believe in our S O P qualification package, we provide letters of recognition from multiple uh city staff, city uh. Employees um that we work for in this area.
Right. Again, as much information as we can give our community, uh we are transparent. And we want you to have as much information as we have. And that's why our meetings are conducted this way. Anybody. Can jump in and ask a question because there's nothing to hide. Yes.
Deputy Chief Wagner is on board now and he remembers this assessment to answer Councilwoman. Uh McCulloughs, if you want that answer, uh Councilwoman.
I could try. Okay, I I think the assessment that you're speaking of is one that was done by the union or and and by the personnel. Um but but the one that Alex is speaking of is probably more structural. Um the one that was done then was more like basically based on the space at the time. It was, you know, during. At at the peak of the pandemic and we had multiple people sharing offices um. And and just just the overall layman's look of the building. I think we we produced. I don't know how many pages of of just what was observed, just walking through the building. From layman's terms, but this is more of a structural, I think, uh look a a at at the building.
Very good, very good. Uh Mr. Long, thank you. Uh for for answering these questions for us and giving us clarity on what we what we're doing. Uh Council, do we have any other questions or would we like to proceed? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve or deny.
I'll, I'll move to, uh, approve the, uh, relationship, the contract here.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item seven C. Discussion possible action regarding providing direction on approving a one-year lease for two-two-two-two Cedar Drive to serve as a police substation. Councilmember Yancy.
Yes, um, you guys pray for me. I just got my booster today, so I'm a little loopy. So just work with me today. I just kind of hit me, but, uh, get your booster. On a serious note, we, uh, I am the representative for District A and in District A, we have had a lot of crime, particularly on that section, uh, between Lake Road and Bayou Road of Cedar. And, uh, that's an area that, that I'm very concerned about, that we need to clean up. Uh, and I have, uh, talked to the chief and our city attorney about setting up a presence in that area. For those of you that are, that live in that area, uh, from Mike's Washateria till about, uh, the middle of past Frost, that area is lit up with crime between the hours of one AM and four AM in the morning, like it's twelve noon. And we have a lot of, uh, dope dealing happening in that area and we want to stop that. Now, I am a big believer that you cannot keep doing the same thing if you want something different. And we need a presence there on Pearl and Cedar. We know that has, uh, just last week, I got a call from a resident, one of my district, uh, uh, citizens about shooting in that area. Our businesses are also being impacted on Pearl and Cedar. And so I'm asking my fellow council uh, people to, to help us in this fight, to push back on crime. I want to thank, uh, our chief and interim city manager of Reynolds Oregon for being very diligent and watching some of those hotspots. I'm very concerned about our children in that area and, uh, the increased drug activity. We are also meeting, I've already met with the owners and, and, uh, some of those owners in the area. In September, we have a second meeting with them because I believe that some of our owners may be complicit in the drug activity that we see here in Lamarck. And so I will, I would like to do something different by having a presence there, using that as a place for our policemen can be there at that particular time with a police car. That is prime property on Cedar in the city of Lamarck. And that needs to be an area where business owners feel safe. And that, again, there are only two ways where a city makes money. That's property taxes and sales tax. And if businesses don't come here because of the crime, then we, we won't, we won't have an opportunity to have tax release because our pro, our property values are older. Our property is older. That's why we need new housing. We need new businesses, but we've got to clean it up and do some things. I want to thank Mayor Bell for his previous, uh, investment as the District A representative to demolish a lot of, uh, ho- homes that were substandard in the area during his tenure. And now we have home building, but we're not done yet. There's still a lot of work to be done. And so I want to commend our police officers who, uh, we are rebuilding and we are trying to give them what they need to be successful so that businesses will want to come here. Middle-class families will want to move back into the area. This is a great place to live, ten minutes from the coast. Great place to live. But do we have some hotspots? Yes, we do. And it's in the middle of Cedar. So I'm asking the council to approve this so that our policemen can, uh, have an intentional designated spot to clean this up in District A. The office will als, can also be used by our council people uh, when you need to meet with your constituents as well during the day. But we want to do something impactful uh, for the safety of our children and also to let the criminals know this is no longer your hiding place.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Yancy. Do we have any questions for Councilwoman Yancy at this time?
Uh, uh, this is clarification more for, uh, Gus and, uh, procedurally, and I like presence, expand police presence. But in terms of procedurally, as I recall some things and other organizations I'm with, if the space is donated, then that's one thing. And we had that before. Chief Ergon, you might recall that out in District B where we had space donated for a police substation. And, uh, so you could designate that in terms of, that is a donated space. Uh, but in terms of specifically in indicating an addresses, uh, as included in this, if it's for value, then I think that we have to pursue an RFP for, uh, for space in that area.
Yes, uh, and we can definitely look at that in further detail, kind of what this was, um, slated to do would be counsel to provide authorization of an amount up to, um, and authorize staff to enter into negotiations with, um, a proposed site. Um, we, we, we didn't want to be in a situation where we brought something to the council that, that, that the council wasn't aware of. That we had, we had done a bunch of legwork on a, an issue like this that the council was not aware of. Um, so that, that's what, that's what we're.
Well, let me suggest then that, once again, just for purposes of open meetings, uh, and our, well, that there'd be a motion passed that we solicit space along this area.
But isn't that a state law? I'm, I'm sorry to cut you off because we did.
Let me finish. Let me finish. Okay. That we, uh, solicit the RFP for this area, indicate the area. But in terms of the numbers, that's the exception under open meetings. It's, uh, information for real estate purposes. We don't go out and say, okay, we've got this amount of money for this.
A- absolutely. The, the amount would be just, uh, an amount that, um, an up to amount. Um, and and I'll be, and we, of course, I, I understand the, the reticence with, if you say up to an amount, you're obviously going to get that amount. I understand.
I see what you're saying.
But.
But, but when we met last week, you, me and, 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 uh, Chief, the state law says that it's as lo, as long as we don't go over fifty thousand, correct? It doesn't have to.
Yeah, that's the state purchasing rules.
That's the state purchasing.
Correct. And, and the Lamarck Charter tracks.
Right. So if it's, if it's six hundred dollars a month for one year, that's seventy-two hundred for the year. So we wouldn't have to put it out for, but it's good because there's a reason why we want to do Pearl on Cedar because of the excess crime that is helping that. So, um, when we met, I asked that question about, is it legal? Can we do it? Up to this amount? And the answer was what?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. I mean, that, 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 yes, we, the city can do that if, if it so chooses.
For clarity, once again, I don't want, if you're saying that if, and and you've already identified an address here, but this, this address of twenty-two, twenty-two Cedar Drive. So if we're proceeding on this, then is there an attachment here with regard to a, a lease agreement or anything with regard to that?
No, um, we have not done the lease agreement because the first step was to bring it to council. So the second step would be to do a lease agreement, but we wanted to make sure that we bought it to council first. The, the other spots there, Joe, are commercial property. That particular unit is the only one where you can actually lease and have an office. Everything else, they're not leasing anything. And there's a reason we believe for that. That's why the crime is so high there. So, um, we wanted to do something intentional, very different to make sure that we can, and it's only for a year. So we can, uh, we've got to do something because that is a crime-ridden area. We have shootings every week almost in that, in that corner. And we've got to have a, a better presence than we do now.
So then my suggestion is that we amend this motion to indicate just exactly that, and I'll feel more comfortable, is to say then, consistent with, uh, our, of the, what is it? The, you referenced it, the Texas.
The purchasing.
The purchasing rule.
Farm is that, um, we enter into an agreement or to, uh, acquire or utilize space, uh, two-twenty-two Cedar Drive for one year uh, at a negotiated rate period. And that's it. And that's, and, and do it under that fashion. Does that make sense?
Any other questions?
My question, I have, uh, my biggest question is what have we done previously to stem that violence? Yes, sir.
It's three thousand or more for three bids. Fifty thousand is the max for council has to approve.
Yeah.
So if it's over three thousand or more, that you could ask Suzie that, we need three bids typically. That's, that's our city's, uh, purchasing policy.
Yeah.
Suzie, can you help me on that?
I don't think she can hear. I, I didn't say you weren't here. I said, I don't think she can hear you, Chief.
Yes, the three thousand dollars is when we need to get three quotes. Uh, plus we also need to search or attempt to search for hub vendors. Fifty thousand is when we have to go out for bid. That's the threshold. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, we're not purchasing anything. That's.
Let, let's do this. Let, let's do this. Let, let's get all of our questions answered and then let's, let's table this. So that we can then make sure that legally, we've done all of our due diligence. From a financial perspective, we understand exactly, uh, what we're dealing with. Uh, and then we can give council a chance to, to digest this, formulate questions uh, and proceed in a, in a very, very transparent way. Um, and we don't want to be, we don't want the information to be mixed up, jumbled, misinterpreted or anything like that. And I don't think that that's Councilwoman Yancy's intention. Uh, so let's slow down, uh, get some questions answered. If we have questions for Ms. Yancy, give it to Gus and Suzie uh, and allow them to, uh, bring back something, uh, something to us that'll, uh, make sure that we stay within the guardrails. How's that sound, Councilwoman?
Yes, that's fine. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and move and table this to next month so we can get further clarification of what it's of what is a purchase, what is all that. I, uh, that's the motion.
Before we make a motion, I still had a question.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna get your questions answered.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you're fine. We're gonna get all the questions answered. Kim has a motion on the floor. Somebody will second it after the questions are answered. And then we'll go ahead and proceed. Go ahead, uh, Mike.
Chief, question for you. What have we done in the interim before this step to curb the violence in that area? Have we stepped up our patrols? Have we?
Yes, we.
Cause I'm just wondering because even just parking a vehicle there and having police officers there. I mean, that may not stem the curb of violence. And we, we just wasted money.
We've been doing, uh, directed patrols in at-risk areas of our city. We've stepped it up. Uh, there is, there is merit to the fact that having a substation does, uh, is a deterrent, a felt presence. It's just their writing report does work. Uh, i- in my first run here many years ago, we had one substation donated to us at the outlet mall. The mayor asked me to check that again. Uh, we're trying to find the, uh, the, the man in charge. And we were there, but after I left, it kind of died, but the, uh, we had issues with the bathroom there or something. The thing was, when we start community policing, I will say this, and I told the mayor, you will believe the people that offer us places free. And, uh, I don't know whether it'd be right there in that direct spot with Councilwoman Yancy is talking about because that is, there's merit to what she's saying. Uh, police presence does reduce crime, the fear of crime. So, um, we are doing extra patrols there. I call it beyond extra patrols. Directed patrol actions means we're looking for something specifically. We're not just randomly marked patrols.
Gotcha. Okay. I just want to make sure like.
We're gonna have offices all over, uh, substations all over the city. It's my, it's my, it's my goal.
Gotcha. Appreciate it. Thanks, Chief. I'm good now, sir.
Casey, do you have any questions?
No, I look forward to having more details next time. And I am, I applaud, uh, Councilwoman Yancy for bringing some new ideas to the table. And I appreciate her meeting with Gus and with Chief and for getting this ball rolling.
Very good, very good. I was, uh, reminded to remind all of us by Kiara. Uh, she wrote this note. She said, if you table an item, it triggers a second meeting on the fourth Monday of the month. Uh, and so we're gonna.
No, actually, I, I'm glad because, and Kiara knows this, we have yet to act upon the final reading of our chicken ordinance. And it would be a great, not that I want to bring that over, but I'd like to close the page, right? And, and that might be an opportunity.
Sounds like, gang, we're gonna be here, uh, uh, Jan, I'm sorry, Casey, we're gonna be here January twenty-fourth. Uh, but it's okay because we want to make sure we get it, we get whatever we decide, yea or nay, we want to make sure that we get it right. Come on, Ms. Manette. Why don't you just sit in the front row?
Um, so the property that y'all, y'all are talking about leasing it, correct? The, this twenty-two, twenty-two Cedar?
I believe, I believe that's, that's Ms. Yancy's proposal.
Okay, um.
Have no idea. Have no idea.
His name is, no, no, he's a, he, he's a private owner, uh, and w- we'll be meeting with him, uh, soon, once we get this approved. He's a private owner.
And it's empty now?
It's empty now.
Okay, and maybe they be going to work on that amount, how much you pay to lease it. It's empty. It's not collecting anything.
Right, right, right. He's very open to helping clean that area up. Yeah, he is. He is very open. As, as a lot of our, our, uh, owners here are wanting to assess the city.
Is it, so I don't know. Is it a strip, little strip? Is it a building by itself?
It's an apartment building at the bottom. It's a strip. There's an event planner, uh, business in there and then two offices. And then they, they live on, there, there's an apartment at the top. It's that little building on Cedar, on the corner of Cedar and Pearl, right? Yeah.
And you said it's a private owner?
It's private owned.
And Ms. Manette, many times we have council members that bring things to us. Uh, and the purpose of having this open meeting is so that we can figure out, find out, understand. And some of these things, we don't have any information on. And so we're just as, uh, out of answers on some of these things as you, which is why we have these meetings, which is why Ms. Yancy will come back, uh, to us with more detail. Yes, sir. Come on and approach, Mr. Mr. Loftus. You can't get away. If, if Ms. Manette has to come to, come before the principal. And when I say principal, I want everybody to understand, these five folks. Not, not me.
I have an answer to her question.
Address, Mr. Loftus.
Johnson Street, Lamarck. So, um, she asked who owned that, uh, property. I went to GCAD just that quick. The owners, uh, of that property is Landon Square Apartment, Inc., P O Box nine-one-eight out of Lake City. Uh, so y'all can figure it out from there.
Very good. Thanks, sir. Any other questions? We need a second on the table.
I'll second it.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item seven D, discussion possible action regarding approving a lighting commission study for the city of Lamarck. Councilwoman Yancy.
Okay, so this goes back to the whole, uh, the safety issue and trying to get a commission study done to know. I'm a little concerned and, uh, when we had Vincent come and talk to us, remember about the lights and some of our lights are antiquated, uh, and we're replacing or repairing lights with antiquated lights again. So just trying to get a lighting commission study done so we could see what would be the cost for that, for us to have improved lighting within our, our city. So that's, that's what I would like to see so we can get it. Cause right now, it seems like everything is kind of vague, right? Um, and just, uh, if we're gonna light up our city to make it safer, if, if we can get that, uh, commission done to know, because some of our lights are yellow and that's from like thirty years ago. And why are we replacing yellow lights with thirty-year-old lights that best-practice cities do not use, utilize anymore?
Yeah.
So if we could get a study done and see how much it would cost. I know that was, we talked about that, uh, the last meeting. So, uh, we can, uh, we want our city to win those awards where you can win. we can, uh, we want our city to win those awards, where you can win awards for Best American City, safest city, all of those awards, lighting has a lot to do with that.
Very good. Lighting being, being another element of, of safe city. Do you know, uh, have you, have you spoke with, uh, Chief Argon as relates to, uh, a potential study? Is that something that we have to?
Yes.
Contract out?
Right.
That's not something we can do in-house? Is that what we're saying?
She, uh.
And I'm asking just so that we'll know.
Well, Councilwoman Yancy is correct. We need to look at this, uh, much deeper than we've been doing. We got lighting, it's, gosh knows, fifty, sixty years old, sodium, high personal sodium. The new world is twenty-first century, they're going LED. And we've had some meetings. And just like we had Ms. Cross, uh, at that intersection on Delaney Road. It took us, they're doing a study. Uh, Dan is doing, Adico is working on that. And that's the only way we're gonna know whether it's gonna prevent accidents or not. We need to have a study to tell us what we need and how much it's gonna cost. And then we could stop right there and realize, we're gonna have to come up with some budgetary funds. This is necessary. Crooks do not like to work in daylight. And we do need to do this with our safe city. This ship falls right into place.
Very good, very good.
Let me just, just add to that, even if it's, uh, what I have discovered, and again, my, my background is housing, is that we don't have a, we don't have records. We don't have even, even, let's say we can't do the next five years, the, the next councils after us ought to be able to say, well, let's look at that study.
Yeah.
From twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two that they conducted. And it may be twenty-twenty-five, but you have some data. And when I'm asking questions, where is the data? No one has it. Has it happened? And on decisions without data. And so we need to get that in our, our files. Just like we had the question earlier, when we asked the question, where is the internal assessment? No one really knows. So we, we've got to do a better job of fact-finding and data collection so that, uh, councils after us will be better prepared to make decisions.
Sure, sure. Any questions for Councilwoman Yancy?
Well.
Go ahead, Jim.
Not specifically for, for Kim, but in general, the concept of a study for clarity purposes. I don't think you were here with us yet, but I think you and I were in a meeting just for clarity with, uh, Mr. Herrera.
I was there.
Were you there?
Yes.
But, uh, was someone from, um, yeah, Center Point was there as well, too. And at that meeting, Dan indicated that they were working on a analysis of our streetlights. And then I don't know what, what has happened to that.
It, it, uh, did go any further at that point. I talked to Dan on many occasions. It's a very deep study that's gonna cost. And there's, that's the bottom line. We gonna do it right, we gonna have to pay for it.
And, well, let me ask you something. Is that something that, that analysis? It seemed to me that, uh, Mr. Herrera, Texas New Mexico and Center Point could perhaps offer some, some resources or assistance in that area. I would like to partake in them. That, but certainly they do that for other cities, uh, part of their business, right? Give us an idea of what the.
The problem was they didn't tell us. That was the issue.
Well, I, I'm interested in knowing that before, but, 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 and then expand that even further is to say, let's look at other ways to light up our city. We can utilize, uh, like I just recently purchased, and I know some business owners have, is solar LED lights that are, that are then, we don't have to wait for them to do something. Then the city can go out and put those if there's a need in a particular area. So, yeah, I think we have to have a study. I think we also have to
Right.
take a close look at our costs. And Suzie, correct me, there is a disagreement between councilperson Yancy and I at that meeting. I think you said that our total monthly cost, not total yearly cost for our streetlights, power cost was half a million dollars. Is that correct? You remember that?
Like forty thousand a month. That was the bill.
Oh.
Suzie?
I don't know if she's there or not. Anyway, I, I think I, I support a.
There she is. Mayor, Mayor Portem had a question for you. Is our total expenditure for, uh, uh, lighting our streetlights, is it, is it half a million dollars? Or what's the, what's the correct figure?
Do you remember that?
Uh, no, sir. I don't remember that, but.
I have it someplace.
Yeah, it was just, they gave us the, the JEXA energy bill. About forty thousand dollars per month. So, uh, but I don't know what that is, but, and that's the problem. Everything is so vague. That's what I'm trying to.
So forty thousand dollars a month was the JEXA energy bill?
Right, right.
Twelve months is about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
So that's.
And, and, and that's not, remember, we're paying then Texas, New Mexico, and Center Point an additional fee for the installation and the type of equipment we're putting in and things. So, so, so you're accurate in saying we need to have a complete picture of what we have with regard to our, what we can do as well, too. Maybe solar lights in our, in our parks.
And then, and then once you have that data as well, you can apply for grants. You can apply for things like that, too. So to offset some of that.
Absolutely. Casey, you have anything?
No, I mean, I, we've been talking about conducting this lighting study for a while, and you know, we need numbers, obviously, but.
So let. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
No, I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying, I, you know, I want to see exact numbers, obviously, before I sign off on anything, for sure. But, yeah, I'm absolutely in support of this, so.
Let's do this. Let, let's entertain a motion then to, uh, direct the administration to, uh, search for companies that would be able to provide the study. Uh, and, and actually, uh, receive bids on it. How about that? And then we would, yes, ma'am, come appro-, come on and approach. And then we would be able to, to, hold on just a minute, uh, Ms. Ginger, let me, let me clean this up. And then once we, once we're able to receive those bids, then we would be able to decide between those bids or, or nothing at all, based on the cost. Does that sound okay, guys?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, yes, ma'am. Come on, Ms. Ginger.
So it, it's a comment, not a question. The lights in Saltgrass, of course, it's a newer subdivision.
Yes, ma'am.
When our lights were out, um, former Assistant City Manager, I guess it's the title, David Jordan.
Yes, ma'am.
And I rode around the whole subdivision and wrote the numbers down of all the streetlights. And I guess he contacted Center Point, and they came out and fixed our streetlights. So I don't know if there was a charge for that, or if that's what we're supposed to do, or if the lights you're talking about are newer, like the ones in Saltgrass. I, I don't, just for comment. I don't know whatever happened with that, but the lights are on, so.
Yeah, it, it, we, uh, we had a program that, uh, uh, Mr. Jordan referred to as Get Lit. True story, true story. What he, what he said. Um, it, it has been renamed Light Up Lamar. Uh, and, and one of the things that we did was we, we, our staff went around looking for those opportunities, Ms. Ginger. Uh, and I believe the last, uh, council meeting, or maybe the one before that, we found that, that the majority of, uh, help me out, gang, was it Center Point or Texas, New Mexico? It, the majority of Texas, New Mexico's lights had been repaired or replaced, with the exception of about five. And so that is a program that we have been actually trying to pursue, uh, to some level of success. Uh, now, I believe what Councilwoman Yancy is referring to is those gaps, right? Right? Those places where there aren't any lights at all, or maybe even those areas of town where we need additional lighting, right? Because some of those areas are high-crime areas. And so I think that's what, what the goal is. Again, uh, as with anything, if, if, if it proves to be too costly, uh, that might be something we would have to put on the back burner. Uh, if it's within a cost range, a price range, that the community would like to see it move forward, then we would have a study. Uh, and again, more information so that we can move forward in making our city as safe as we possibly, possibly can. Go ahead, Jim.
Mayor, and Ginger, just to tag on there. The issue as well that we became aware of is that it's not just the power cost, like JEXA Energy is who we utilize as a city to pay for both the Center Point and the Texas, New Mexico lights. However, Center Point and Texas, New Mexico charge the city when they change those lights. And that's, there's an additional cost associated with that as well, too. This has just been, we learned long-term practice in terms of dealing with these streetlights. So that's our goal, is to get, let's get some bottom-line information as to what our streetlights are costing us. How do we expand our presence? Because that makes for a safe city, we know that.
Yeah.
Uh, Chief has told us that, too. So, um, and finally, congratulations on your new job as well, too.
Yay! Who's that?
Ginger.
Hey! Well, congratulations, Ms. Ginger, and, and, and happy, happy experiences on your new job. Very good, very good. All right. So we're entertaining a motion, uh, to direct the administration to bring us back three bids for a possible, uh, uh, lighting study. Uh, I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing number, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven E, discussion possible action regarding cleaning the waterways in Omega Bay subdivision. Councilmember Carlson.
Okay, ever since I was elected, um, one of their, their two big concerns out there in Omega Bay was their streets, which we know there's, we've got the tourists for, and their waterways. Information I was given, which I have found out is erroneous. Um, the information was that those waterways were private, just like the streets. They are not. They are controlled by the Corps of Engineers. So we, as a city, can find ways to clean them up. So with that being said, I've contacted the Corps of Engineers and the city manager, I'm gonna pass the ball off to you. Their phone number is four zero nine seven six six three eight nine nine. Now, the, the state of Texas hates the word dredging. I found that out. You don't dredge. But we can find a way to, whether the Corps comes out of their pocket to help us out, or we get a grant. I know the watershed, the previous administration was both been working with the watershed community to get a grant or to work on that, but that's another direction. But the Corps of Engineers is the one that controls that, the waterways out there. So I'd like to see if we can get something done and get them taken care of. They are part of our city. They don't deserve to be treated just like a cash cow, as people have told me. The residents have told me they thought they were a cash cow for the city. So I just want to get them taken care of, make them feel a part of the city, because they are a part of the city. And I don't want them to feel left out. So that's why I brought that on the agenda. It's something that's been overdue for eons. But I want to make good on what I've told them out there, cause I will see what I can do for them. So, um, my action would be to direct the city, city staff to work on finding a way to get that, get their, uh, needs taken care of.
Very good, very good. Any, any, let, let's do this. We're gonna open this up for questions from council. Uh, but let's say, uh, this about our, our family members out at Omega Bay, uh, that we all believe that they are equally as important, uh, as any other, uh, subdivision or neighborhood in our community. Uh, they have value and worth outside of, uh, tax dollars. They're human beings. Uh, and they have families, and they want a piece of the American dream like all of us do. Now, what have we done? Uh, this council, uh, has made sure that we've directed, uh, our city manager to increase patrols, uh, police patrols in Omega Bay. That's a real thing. Uh, we have seen the data, uh, from that. Previous council, uh, initiated a tourist, a tax increment reinvestment zone uh, to help pay for, uh, the street maintain, maintenance, uh, that's desperately needed in Omega Bay. Those were private streets, uh, that they, uh, bought into, uh, but many of them, uh, certainly, uh, were not aware of that. Uh, and so as a municipality, we can't provide tax dollars, uh, to their streets to maintain them. But what we could do, and what we did do, is we recreated a tourist. Uh, and the proceeds from that tourist will be used to help repair, uh, those roads, uh, in Omega Bay. This, this council, uh, has, uh, sought, uh, to produce safety lighting. Uh, that will, that is something that we will tackle, I believe, I hope, I pray this year, uh, so that, that those streets would be lit, uh, for safety purposes. Uh, and now we are trying to tackle the issue of, of the waterways, uh, and the cleanliness, uh, of those. Uh, and so that's just an update for those of us that live in Omega Bay, uh, to know that this council is actively, actively working, uh, on your behalf. Now, do we have any questions for Mr. Carlson?
Yes, sir.
I do recall, prior to you joining council, and this is your past councilperson, or Mitchnich, Robert talked about his effort to acquire a grant, as I recall. Robert, you, you talked about that. And, uh, however, the previous administration was not so warm to that effort, as I recall you say. And, uh, however, you're, you're accurate in saying that apparently there are some grant funding, there is grant funding out there uh, to assist in the waterway issue, because I think that's what Robert had, had, had you tried to do, Robert, correct?
You, you may approach, Ms. Mitchis. Welcome, and please give us your address, sir.
Robert Mitchditch, uh, twenty-four North Curlew. Yes, you're right, we did something. And it was on our own. It was with the own homeowners association. Uh, we, uh, worked and created a plan for eco-reparation of the canals. Yes, that would do dredging, but you don't use that word with the Corps. Why, I don't know. But it's eco-reparation. There were a hundred and eighty applications within the entire country, all over, for projects like this or similar. There are only eight accepted by Washington. ours was one of them. It was huge. It was huge. Went nowhere. We did get through everything. It is a cost share. And we had the money through the mud, uh, to participate. In fact, we did the initial part with it, uh, of twenty-five grand. The cost study, we enlisted the Rice University, we enlisted Texas A&amp;M. They were all on board to help us for free. The study, there has to be another study, although we did commission our own study at less than twenty-five thousand. And that study included Bio Vista and Omega Bay, of which the Omega Bay subdivision would have run about eight hundred thousand in order to dredge those canals. Originally, Bio Vista had been dredged with IT money. Uh, but our city manager at that time did not apply for any money for the Omega Bay. But, uh, our, our assessment still stands. I'm sure price has gone up some, you know, for the dredging of it. But the Corps of Engineers, the way it works, is that it's a, they fund the first one hundred thousand dollars of a study. They have to do their own study. So no matter what we did, they have to redo and do their own study. We had a lot of help with, uh, the drainage, uh, system and with Texas A&amp;M. We have the Highland Bio, uh, Reserve thing. This, uh, this cost study is a hundred thousand dollars, and beyond that, if it goes over that, then it's a fifty-fifty share. Uh, it went to, it went here, the Houston office, or Galveston office of the Corps, said, we don't anticipate anything over a hundred and fifty thousand, which would have meant another twenty-five thousand out of our pockets from our HOA and from our mud, which we were willing to. which we were willing to pay. After it left here, it went to Dallas. And at that point, the Dallas said, "We do not want A&amp;M. We do not want any other help from Rice", who are big in these types of enterprises. And they said it will cost no less than four hundred and fifty thousand dollars just for the study. At which point, we came to the city manager, we came to the previous mayor, and nothing. And that neighborhood is very, very dejected, because there was no help, not one letter written, nothing. So out of eight hundred, eight, one hundred and eighty applications, and only eight being accepted in the country for this, we had a premium spot, and no one would even write a letter for anything. So, I appreciate the help. I don't know that you're gonna fare any better, but to go through this process again and try to get it from the Corps? I don't know. But Cecilia, uh, she has sent emails to the city to attend those, uh, meetings about Highland Bio and the watersheds. They were the ones that stated there are some other state grants available. But it does take a city to make those applications. We can't just do it as an HOA. So, yes, we would appreciate it.
So let's, let's do this.
And that, you can use the word dredging.
So let's, let's do this, Mr. Mitchich. Hold on, hold on a minute. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. You said, you said the previous city manager did nothing.
Correct.
Okay, now, if you're willing, as a citizen, I know that I'm willing, perhaps Michael's willing, for us all to work on this with Chief Argon. Are you willing to get involved in this one more time, to see if we can bring something back to the council?
Absolutely, absolutely. There, there are several residents that want to see this happen. You know, and one more or enough?
Would you, would you then, uh, if, if Chief Argon contacted you to set up a meeting, would you then be available to attend that meeting? With myself, Chief Argon, councilmember Carlson?
Another significant member
Absolutely.
Led that project, uh, that would, it would be apropos for, for that gentleman to be there.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. We'll get that, we'll get that set up. Absolutely.
Robert, what was the name of that grant? The one that was like the hundred and eighty we were submitted? Like, what was it exactly? Because I've been trying to do some research on those grants.
It was with, it was through the Corps of Engineers, uh, councilwoman, uh, I don't know that the name was on it. It was Eco Restorations something, uh, I don't recall the actual verbiage that we had, but it is, falls under Eco Restoration. And, uh, history, this goes back to uh, prior, before Trump even was elected office. And, and, uh, we had had meetings here, uh, with, uh, Carol Butler, and it looked very positive at that time, with Mr. Iragoyan, uh, from the Corps. And it looked like we were the only application within the entire state, uh, that had something like this, and it looked like it's gonna pass. Then election came in, and because there was so much federal spending ahead of time, they shut everything down, and I just I sent it all back to square one, you know, so there was no funding for anything. But then we started it again, uh, under this process, and it was, and a long and tedious process to get to that point, and, uh, didn't go anywhere.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Let me just say, uh, I wanna add to that. You know, after Hurricane Harvey, there was a lot of, uh, grant opportunities with HUD as well and with the Glow Office. So I, I, I wanna encourage, uh, the city manager to, to look at some of that, because Hurricane Harvey was a significant event for Galveston County, that there, there may be additional funds, so we may have to piecemeal it together, different grants to come up with that eight hundred thousand dollars. Let, let me just say this to you, Rob, Robert, and those from Omega Bay. Omega Bay is a treasure for this community. It is a blessing. I remember coming and visiting from Clear Lake, going to Omega Bay, Bio Vista, Tea Island, and it was a, it was a great place. It is a diamond. And as a councilwoman, whatever I need to do to, to make, to help continue that tradition, but nasty waterways is not good for children, environmentally, anyway. And so whatever we need to do, and I'll, I'll do some looking as well. Grant Works can help a lot, save some time, in getting some of this done, since they are working with us as well. But you know, that opportunity of windows, since Hurricane Harvey may close, so we gotta be aggressive, trying to see if there's additional grants still out there.
Well, I think we still have some IC money left, so that's what I'm trying to find in the budget that we could possibly use for that.
Yeah. Well, uh, council, I, I will entertain a motion that we direct, uh, the city managers to start working on a plan to clean the waterways in Omega Bay, uh, and that that plan would include working with, uh, Mr. Mitchich. What was the other person's name, Robert? Richard, and, and a Mr. Richard Matthews, with councilmember Carlson and myself as the representative, uh, representatives of, of the constituency in Omega Bay. I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item seven F, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Allocating Fund Received From American Rescue Plan Act. Mayor Protem.
I, I wanted to follow up on the American Rescue Plan dollars. We received a report at our last council meeting, that we have already, we are already in receipt, as I recall, of two point four million dollars of the allocation that we received, which represents fifty percent of the American Rescue Fund dollars. Now, at that last meeting, we also took action to, uh, contract with Grant Works to act as an administrator, which is part of the process. Uh, we have compliance with regard to the, the dollars that we receive, and that becomes important in terms of the, uh, program management, and then, uh, any follow-up audits are associated with that particular money. There is a process that the council and the community has in this, and that's where I'm encouraging us to start initiating that. And that is to start looking at the full range of options and spending tra, uh, strategies potentially available to us as a community, and to reach out to our community as a whole, to our stakeholders, uh, and, uh, and, and as well as other regional, uh, organizations that have also received this money. And what's the opportunities that are available to us to collaboratively utilize the dollars that we have? The, uh, so, that, that's the purpose of putting on there. I just learned in this discussion, by the way, with regard to Omega Bay, if, if the, if, as you say, uh, the, the eco-friendly work that would have to be done out there, let's not use the word dredging, uh, but, um, if that is something that can be done, then this is possibly a use of these American Rescue Fund dollars in some way. So I would like that discussion to begin, uh, Mr. Mayor, and then, uh, there was lastly, recent guidance put out by the Department of the Treasury uh, with regard to our American Rescue Fund dollars, and, uh, the the importance that we have, one of the areas which struck is that we, in this engagement part, we can have, uh, let, they call it low-tech strategies, low-tech strategies, by the way. You and I are low-tech strategies, by the way, Mr. Carlson, because we speak to each other, okay? And so, but speaking of the community, it's considered a low-tech strategy. If we wanna take some other steps beyond that, uh, a mid, mid-strategy is to develop some sort of Zoom meeting, some sort of, uh, Mr. City Manager, some sort of forum for our community then to engage, uh, simple surveys as to ideas, thoughts, what, what are permitted uses of these dollars? I can provide you some information with regard to that. And then, of course, uh, uh, higher tech strategies would be some very, very extensive online community engagement, uh, forums that are out there, and I'll also pass that on to you as well, too. Uh, but most important is to, let's get our community involved. Let's identify how we can effectively use these dollars. And, uh, I particularly want to encourage us to look at, what, what have we heard? Now, a, a, apart from bu, building a safer community, Lamarck has this old aging infrastructure. And the last guidance that was provided by the Treasury Department is that we can utilize the American Rescue Fund dollars to look at our, uh, for example, our, our sewer system, or these other lines that have, are plaguing us. And though you and Mayor, you get the calls, I get the calls in certain parts of the city, and maybe to come up with a plan uh, on Duro and Pertheus Farms and other areas where we have these, uh, they are sewer systems that are, uh, now degraded to the point that they're causing backup in people's yards, to look at options out there, including some innovative technologies out there to, to not, not just dig up the whole thing, but to reline the pipes that are out there. City of Houston, other cities are doing that. And so I just wanna look at options and begin that discussion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Would you, uh, are you looking at, uh, possibly a workshop, Joe?
A workshop, that would be part of the quote low-tech, we're talking to each other, right?
Yeah.
And yes, yes, sir.
When would you, uh, uh, when would you, uh, what is your, what is your planning as it relates to?
Well, ideally, we have that second meeting later in the month, if possible.
So maybe come in, come in a little early?
A little earlier.
Maybe, maybe about three or four?
Yes, sir. Have that discussion, and it would be available online as well, too.
Okay.
Will Grant Works have that information for us? Because I know we consulted for them to be able to be our administrator, so will they be at that workshop as well?
Maybe, they, yeah, we'll, we'll call them to the, we'll call them to the workshop, and they would be able to be a resource for us as we, as we navigate through. Tell it, you know, I would assume. Go ahead, Casey. Jump in.
I just wanna say, I'm, I'm totally on board with, like, getting ahead of where do we want these monies to go, and, and looking at sort of the bigger picture and starting to, you know, put post-it notes on things and really start to look at it. But I would say, I don't think there's, I don't think it would be an effective use of our time to meet unless we have someone there who's gonna be integral to guiding us through that process and knows, you know, the steps to take. If we're just to get together and spitballing and whatnot, I think that's a waste of staff time. So I would say, if Grant Works can't be there, and if Grant Works isn't prepared to, and hasn't been able to, you know, talk with Suzie, or whomever beforehand, so that's like, we know what monies we're talking about, and here's the next steps to take if we wanna start identifying where they would go. Hey Suzie, I see you. Hi.
May I jump in?
Jump, jump in, Suzie.
Okay, actually, uh, before Christmas, Grant Works and I, we have already been discussing, uh, maybe after the first of the year, after the contract is, it's signed by the mayor, regard, uh, between city and, and Grant Works on ARPA, that we can meet and brainstorming what projects that can be, uh, utilizing the funds. They did ask for that, but I did not know everyone's schedule, and at the time, the contract had not been signed yet. So they are ready. It's just, uh, we just need to take one step at a time. So thank you, Mayor, for signing that contract recently.
Okay, well, then it sounds like maybe then, then that would be a good time, this twenty-fourth date. Great. I just wanted to make sure we don't meet without Grant Works, so.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Casey. Any other questions? So I will entertain a motion that we schedule a workshop on Jul, uh, January the twenty-fourth. Oh, January the twenty-fourth, uh, council, three, three PM, would that be okay? Then we can go from three to five, take a hour break, and then, and then start with our, uh, our special meeting? I will entertain a motion that we schedule a, a special workshop, uh, January the twenty-fourth, three PM, uh, to consider, uh, expenditures as they relate to the American Rescue Plan Act monies received from, uh, the federal government.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing number, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Item seven G. Discussion Possible Action Regarding Forming a Charter Review Committee. The last charter review committee, I believe, was twenty fourteen? Twenty fourteen. Uh, they're supposed to be done every five years. We all remember that we had, and we are still in the midst of a pandemic, which has slowed our timetable down. Mayor Protem has brought this back to the council, uh, for discussion and planning. Mayor Protem.
Well, I specifically brought it up, as you just stated.
Yes.
There's usually a five-year timeframe here, but more particularly, if possible, we have already, I'm trying to look at cost savings, since we already have an election in May. If the timeframe would permit it, if we start, uh, and form a charter review committee, that perhaps their work can be done, whatever time schedule permits, then, because this would have to be brought to the voters.
Right.
Uh, to be included in the election in May, uh, and that was the purpose. But we have certain needs that we need to update in our
Have to address.
In our, in our charter.
Is, that's, uh, that's true. Let, let's, before we get into that, man, let's, 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 uh, catch, uh, catch Gus off guard. And, and let's ask Gus, in order, uh, according to Mayor Protem's proposal, or his thought, it's not a proposal yet, uh, in order to, to put the charter review recommendations on the ballot in May, uh, what would be the drop-dead last date that we would be, as a council, have to meet in order to decide?
For this May?
This May.
Uh, I would need to look and get back, I can get back to council, report back to you all on the twenty-fourth.
Okay. So, so let's, let's, let's do that. Uh, report back to us on the twenty-fourth, council. If I were you, I would be prepared to name your person, uh, for this charter review committee. Uh, usually, each councilperson has, uh, uh, appoints one person. Uh, they go through the entire charter. They, uh, then make recommendations to the council, uh, and the council can then accept or reject those recommendations, uh, not necessarily as a package, but individually. And then those things would then, uh, be put to the voters for, for ratification. I would be prepared to name that person, just in case Gus says to us that, uh, we still have time. Remember, we have to name a charter review committee. They would need time to meet, perhaps all the month of February, uh, to meet and discuss the issues as they relate to the charter, and then they would probably, uh, after that, bring those issues back to this council. Uh, it's a quick timeframe. Uh, none of us, uh, anticipated that we would have an election this year. This is our off year. Uh, and so while there is an election, and we're having to spend those monies, uh, to conduct an election, uh, if we ha, if we can, uh, let's put, uh, all of these decisions on the ballot for our constituency, so that they can come in and vote and give us clear direction on charter review, police station, uh, and taxation. Does that sound?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What, what's the date to get it on the ballot? Isn't it like February? You have to have it done by February or March?
Yeah, that's what he's gonna research.
Oh.
And we'll meet again in January, so we'll be able to know. That's why I said in January, have that person in mind that you all wanna appoint. Uh, and, and even, uh, Kiara, let's, let's even just have that as an item on the agenda in January. We don't even have to, we can, we can bypass it. Uh, but let's do everything in our power to make sure that we're ready, just in case we have to step up the timetable.
Yeah, because if I remember correctly, I thought it was in February.
Okay.
So that's pretty quick.
Okay. So, uh, Mayor Protem, how about we, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, direct the city attorney to explore, uh, opportunities for a charter review election in May?
Or the, the first practical date?
Or the first practical date?
Or legal date, or whatever.
Did you get that, Kiara? Uh, the motion may be that we would, uh, direct, uh, the city attorney to, uh, help me with the wording, Joe.
To, uh, research whether a charter review election could
Be held in May?
It could be held in May. It could be held in May, or the earliest, or if not, the earliest practical date. The earliest permitted date.
Okay. And so we'll be prepared anyway, Kiara, just in case.
And let me ask, Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate to also say that we go ahead and and i- in that motion, say we are forming a charter review committee?
Absolutely, absolutely.
As well.
Absolutely. No doubt about it. We have to form it. I think the the only outstanding question is whether or not we would be able to bring this to the voters in May or if we would then have to wait until November, until the next uniform election. There is a midterm this year. Uh, excuse me, a midterm election this year, uh and I believe that the uh position of county judge is on the ballot. And so there will be a lot of participation in our in our county elections in November. Uh, did you make that motion?
Yes.
He made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Carlson seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, item seven H. Discussion possible action regarding resolution of water billing overcharges. Mayor Protem.
And this is a follow-up item. We've carried this over. Our last meeting, we were uh I had suggested that perhaps to deal with this by way of history, there was a uh no fault. I'm not going to indicate anybody, right? But there was an overcharge of water bills. And uh rather than spending all staff time in exploring what this and what happened and everything else, just a simple uh credit on everyone, one-time credit on everyone's water bill of $10. Uh we have approximately, Suzie, help me out, approximately 5,000 water connections in the city is I I think.
Uh it's about 7,000 accounts. And your idea, as as I mentioned before, it was a great idea, as long as it's legal and that's not my call. Um, you suggested it was like $10 per account. I thought that was an excellent idea. Uh but I'll defer that to our city attorney to.
That that's what Gus was going to explore that and see if that was a feasible feasible. So I leave it to you now.
Sure. Um, so I I discussed with Suzie um first a- as Suzie and the auditors have appined, um the $10 that was chosen by the Mayor Protem is the amount is the maximum amount that someone would have been charged under the differing opinion that the um at the time, utility billing staff were using. That opinion has since been changed. Um and they're they're billing um in in a new way. Um and that's that's fine. Um, it it's if council finds that that is a a um effective method to um adjust the water rate because that number, that $10, is based on the uh auditor's analysis, that would be acceptable.
Okay. Well, I still move that, Mr. Mayor, formally. I move that we make a one-time adjustment of $10 on everyone's water bill and uh we proceed on that.
Very good. That's a motion. There's a second. Any discussion? So let's let's be clear. Uh Gus, I'm getting ready to ask you a question. Uh let's be clear. Uh, we had a, we had a uh an annual audit uh that discovered that the way that uh our utility billing, uh the formula they use to bill uh for water usage was not consistent with uh standard practices uh of of other municipalities. Uh and so that's how we find ourselves in that dilemma. Uh it was a miscalculation in the programming. Now, we're trying to remedy that tonight. Mayor Protem has made a motion that we uh have a $10 credit on each account, one time, one time. Uh, Councilmember Carlson has seconded. Gus, is that legal?
Yes, um based on the auditor's uh analysis, that $10 represents an amount that the maximum amount that a customer would have been the difference in charge.
Very good. Suzie, is that is that fiscally appropriate and ethical?
Yes, sir.
Very good. We got a plan. So all that's left for us is to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Problem solved. Item seven. Uh, let's see, Joe, where are you? Item seven I. Discussion possible action regarding review of proposed city expenditures in light of a tax rollback election. Mayor Protem.
Uh this issue is, we have this pending roll, which is equivalent to a bond election. And all uh what I'm, this item here, uh Mr. Mayor, Mr. interim city manager and and city attorney is that in bond elections, we as a city cannot take a for or against position. But we can provide factual information. And so I would like to suggest, uh if it takes a motion to that effect, that we start preparing the information that we can provide to our residents regards to the budget, what we had to do and uh factual information, not saying yea or nay. Here are just the facts. And it's for you to consider which way you'd like to to vote.
Yeah. Uh. Any questions for Mayor Protem?
I'm sorry, say that.
That in these sorts of elections and Gus, you're, if I'm inaccurate in saying this, but as officials as a city, we're not permitted to take a for or against position. Now, individually, you could do that, by the way, right? Individually. But 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 as the city, as city of, as the city as a whole, we're not here to say, yeah, support this or nay this. But we are will permitted to develop factual material. By the way, this is information with regard to the pending uh tax rollback election that will be held in May. And uh so here's the a history. Uh and then here's the the budget work that we that was done. And here's what the impact would be if if it's if it's rollback. Everything has to be factual. Everything and uh and I'm asking us to start putting that together to so we can have that material and have our residents become aware. And be enlightened in terms of all the material that's up.
So so basically, in the event a rollback passes, we're going to share with the community those areas in which we would cut.
Well, I don't know if we're in that position to do so at at this time, and it would say probably, once again, just factual. I know, I'm trying to think this one out, Gus, you'd have to help me out, but it would, it would uh the the rollback would say here, this is if this is passes, it would be at this rate. And then that represents at that rate X amount of dollars that are going to have to be uh cut from our budget that was approved uh for 2021.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Are you talking like like a T chart?
A T chart? I don't know what that is.
A T chart, like a T chart is, this is what happens if it passes, this is what happens when it does, if it does, like a T.
Yeah, that's it. As long as it's factual, as long as it's factual. Right, we're not here to to argue one way or the other.
Yeah. Any other questions for, I see you thinking, Casey. Are you, i- is there a question coming out of that thought?
Uh, you know my face well at this point, my question face. Um, I I would, I just want to say I'm fully on board with the idea of trying to prepare, you know, the citizenry with what could happen. You know, and us being prepared for that as well. I guess my question is more just like, how, Joe, when you were thinking about this, how do you envision this coming about? Like, who's responsible for it? How is it disseminated? At what point do we disseminate it?
Well, I would, I wouldn't mind, I'd volunteer to work with Gus and prepare the first draft, by the way. And and it's easy enough as uh we're going to go take a look at something like uh the recent uh last year's or two years, a com board election that was successful, right? Using that format of facts, these are the facts. And just use that as a template and then uh come back and for us to agree uh as to that template.
Okay, and it's and it's it's a template that is basically just summarizing, these are the changes. You, these are the types of changes you can expect to see to our budget.
Yes. And then we have other cities in Texas, by the way. I think there are only, there were not that many, but we can take a look as well as to what their factual uh information is and and take a look at that as well as as a template.
Okay, question answered. Thank you, Joe.
Very good.
And by the way, Mr. Mayor, I I just want to, I'm suggesting this, if the residents feel that they don't need it, that's fine, you know, you go out, but I think it would be helpful to have factual information.
No, I I think I think you're, I think you're on to something because we want to always inform the community. We want to be be transparent. Uh, we want to make sure that they understand everything that we understand. And so I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I just think that we have to, like, like you said, work on what it looks like uh to make sure that it's clear and and understandable. And to make sure that that we're informing the public uh in a way that they can then respond, right? Uh and and in whatever way they choose to respond. Um, it's always good. There is no such thing as as giving the public too much information uh in order that they make a decision. Any other questions? Well, I will entertain a motion there, Mayor Protem.
Well, uh, my motion would be to uh authorize uh the city manager and such other of our staff as necessary to develop a a tax rollback fact sheet for purposes of uh the upcoming election in May.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, which one of y'all want to take that one?
Miss Yancey, Ken.
Miss Yancey, you hadn't seconded anything all night. It's yours.
Ladies first.
I'm teasing, I don't know if you seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing that, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item uh seven J, that's mine. Uh discussion uh provide direction to amend billboard sign ordinance, potentially adding an annual fee and raising the minimum evaluation. Kathleen? Would you approach, please, and help me? Help me to understand this, what I put on the agenda. I'm teasing. So so here's the thing, I I uh uh this Clear Channel Clear Channel Outdoor uh company has an existing digital sign in our community. They also have a, uh what do you call those? A billboard, if you will. They are looking then to convert their billboard into a digital sign. Uh, they alerted me that there are other communities in uh this state that have uh permitting fees for each billboard or digital sign. Uh, and so my question to you is, are we or are we not requiring permit fees for our digital and billboard signs?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Now, if you're talking about for a billboard sign, no, but for the electrical work, the demolition, if demolish an old one to put put the new digital up and all that, we do charge fees for those permits.
Okay, so so then then it's it's an opportunity for us to then uh if the council so chooses to adopt uh permitting fees for our digital signs and our billboard signs, and those fees would then become annual.
Yes, and I believe it's in the billboard ordinance where it says council can make a resolution for that.
Okay, okay, very good.
Fees are dependent on the resolution.
Okay, very good. And the second thing is, when I spoke to this gentleman, uh he wanted our community to amend our ordinance to go from 50 feet, right, to 60 feet. And so my very, my first uh question to him was, why? What would, you know, why are we doing that? Uh i- is it at 50 feet for a reason? And he suggested to me that 50 feet or 48 feet, I I think is what he said it was uh previously uh was what 48 feet was a state, was a state number, state's number. Uh and we chose 50 because it was more than 48. Now, since then, he is saying to us that um the uh state law has been amended to allow 60 feet.
That is correct, it has.
Okay, so then my next question is, do we as a council or as a community have any heartburn with with amending our ordinance to go from 50 feet to 60 feet?
I certainly don't.
There's no health hazard, no safety hazard?
Ordinance follows the state guidelines.
Okay, so it, okay, so since they've moved theirs, then then, okay, very good.
We just amend the ordinance to the 60 feet.
Right, okay. So, does anybody have any questions for me about this line item or Kathleen who just got thrown into this?
I didn't know anything about this. I just learned this.
Navigating. I'm sorry, uh Casey. Joe, then you.
Okay, it just, um, is this an urgent item?
It is not an urgent item.
Because I need more information.
Absolutely.
I need more information.
Absolutely.
On this item, I'm inclined to to seek the table that.
Yeah.
I agree.
Go ahead, Casey.
I'll just say I agree, because I mean, I will say I'm I'm in favor of permits for the billboards, like, you know, if folks want to advertise in our city. I'm not a huge fan of the billboards, period. I remember, you know, I had some heartburn about the digital billboards in the first place. And in my research, I think there's a, you know, there's a number of communities that banned digital billboards altogether because of the way they affect wildlife and the way they affect communities that are around that because of light pollution and whatnot. However, we do have them, but I'm not particularly inclined for us to change the height. But I would say let's have some more information and let Kathleen get a little more boned up on it as well, and we can talk about it.
I believe that the ordinance was changed that we do not allow any more billboards in the city, but they can convert the existing ones.
Yeah.
Because currently we have 45 on 45 in our city limits. But they can change the existing stagnant to a digital. They just can't add new ones.
Yeah.
Because there is a distance regulation and all that too, so.
Yeah. Any other questions? Let's do this. Uh, I will uh entertain a motion to uh provide this uh as an item on our next meeting uh with uh the appropriate background information. Perhaps we can get the uh sign ordinance. We can get other uh sign ordinances, state law uh for some background information. And we're going to try to get the Clear Channel Outdoor Group to come back to visit with us so that they can give us uh their uh take from from uh from their standpoint. How about that? Sounds like a table. Who who wants to make that motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, well, no discussion on table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Kiara, let's bring this back next meeting. Thank you, Kathleen.
24th or next month?
24th.
The regular, the regular is 24.
Want to get some information on 24?
Okay.
Yeah. That way we'll have a chance to digest it all and be ready to move on it on in February. Item 7K, this is mine as well. Discussion possible action regarding providing direction to interim city manager to authorize parks for to utilize youth funds to replace fencing and update lighting at Mahan Park. And my friend from Just Dogs is here, and Just Dogs is a a select softball and baseball organization. Uh, and uh, and you may approach. Name and and we know your organization is Just Dogs, but would you give?
Steven Van Ness, 505 Field Avenue Court, Lamarck.
Steven Van Ness. I met with uh Steven last week. Uh, was it last week we met?
Yes.
Last week, uh and they have an interest along with uh the uh uh girl softball uh group that that lives uh in Lamarck and and that uh many of our girls uh from Lamarck play in Texas City. They are looking to uh to occupy uh those three fields at Mahan Park. They want to bring softball back, baseball back on a select level, which is a higher level. But they also want to bring it back on a recreational level, which is for those those young people that uh just want to go out and experience fun and softball. Um, the problem with that council is uh that when we were out at the at the Mahan Park uh last week, I believe, Amanda was with us, uh Dan was with us. Amanda was with us, uh, Dan was with us, and Chief Argon as well. Uh, all of the fencing uh on those three fields uh is out of working condition, is safe to say that. We need all new fencing on those three fields, council. Uh, and I know, I know Michael was working on this as well with uh, with uh Rochelle. Uh, we need lighting, uh, the lights are in disrepair. Uh, and we also need uh work done on our concession stand. Uh, and so uh, what I'm asking council uh to consider uh is that we use monies that have been given to us uh by uh waste management. And you all know that waste management is our uh refuse company. Uh, they, they pick up our trash. Uh, and part of their contract is every year they give the city twenty-five thousand dollars for youth activities. This city has not uh expended those monies, Suzie helped me, for twenty-twenty, uh, and I believe twenty-nine, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty. Is that correct, Suzie?
Um, actually, Mayor, we did spend some of it for twenty-twenty-one on the Kid Fish. The city manager spent that, uh, as well as twenty-twenty on some grants that we, that we gave to some nonprofit organizations. However, prior to that, I think we still had some remainders uh from prior years like twenty-nineteen, twenty-eighteen, so forth.
So, so do you, and I'm putting you on the spot, Susan, I'm sorry, but do you happen to know how much money uh do we have in our youth fund as of this day?
Roughly around fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, okay, okay. So council, what I'm asking us, it's going to take twenty-five thousand dollars per field to redo the fencing. There are three fields, that's seventy-five thousand dollars. Amanda, help me, the lighting will take about twenty-five thousand?
Once we get Crescent Electric out there with Texas New Mexico, it's tough with the fishing park. About five years ago, we had them in us out there, we spent eighteen thousand dollars on upgrades. And their current contract holders still cannot get what they're saying. And so it was an issue between Texas New Mexico and Crescent Electric, who's not running the project.
Okay.
So, there will, we will have to add additional lighting out there, but the lighting that's out there is not five-year-old.
Okay. Amanda, would you approach, please? I'm sorry. Mayor Protem didn't, couldn't understand the part of your, your comments.
Uh, which is unusual for you, by the way.
Right?
Say to us again.
So, about five, six years ago, we spent about eighteen thousand dollars with Crescent Electric to upgrade the lighting over there. According to Texas New Mexico, we had to break each section off on its own meter. And so we paid Crescent Electric to come out there, but for some reason, it still was not in compliance with Texas New Mexico standards. And so we've met with Dean Bertrand when he was in charge, we've met with Brady, we've met with several people, and we still cannot get an answer as to what's going on out there while we can't get lighting.
And Mr. Herrera, have you met with him?
I have not.
So there's, so, so no lighting? We, we don't have any lighting?
There is a little bit, there's, there's a few streetlights out there that run through, but as far as the field is concerned,
The field's no light.
When Eddie Benavides had the contract, he did install lighting. Uh, it was quite expensive. Um, I know for two of the fields it has lighting, I don't know about the third field, I don't think it does. And so I think all we need to do is upgrade our side, and if those lights are working, we should be able to provide.
Okay, okay, okay. Does anybody have any questions for Amanda? Uh, uh, again, we're dealing with fencing for fields, we're dealing with lighting, uh, and at the meeting we had, uh, Amanda said that Public Works would be able to uh remodel, if you will.
Yes, sir, I can remodel the concession stand myself, and then we can, if we can find funding for everything else.
Okay, so we're looking at fields and lighting. Yes, Casey?
I have a couple of questions. Um, some of them, I think, are for Amanda, not all of them, but first one is, I'm, I'm recalling with not total clarity, um, I thought we had allotted some funds to already remodel the concession stand not too long ago?
No, ma'am, those funds were pulled by the last city manager, and we were told to hold off on that.
Okay, so we did approve funds.
It was sixty thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, that was approved, uh, budget before last?
The council approved it, but Mr. Jackson decided that he was not going to execute it.
Right.
Okay.
Wanted to wait for the Parks Master Plan.
Okay, right, 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 okay, and that would have been for last year's fiscal year, right, in twenty, during twenty-twenty-one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we approved that in, okay.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty for twenty-twenty-one. Um, okay, well, I'm glad I'm not crazy. Um, at least on that issue. And um, the second was that during this past year's budget discussions, I'm recalling, again, I need y'all to help me out here, and Suzie, that I feel like there were some things that we earmarked those waste management youth funds for. I distinctly remember us going through what the balance was and like allotting things to it.
Yes.
I just don't remember what they are. Was this one of those things?
One of the items you, we earmarked using the youth fund for was the part-timer for the city clerk's office that we can fund out of youth fund.
Okay.
Uh, it was about fifteen thousand.
Okay.
So, uh, we, we have not uh hired anybody yet for, for city clerk's office, but that was what it was earmarked for, yes, out of youth fund.
Well, I mean, so that, that's important, right, so we don't have a full fifty thousand from this.
Well, well, Casey, one, one of the things that Kiara is going to bring to us is uh in lieu of this part-time person, uh, she is going to ask for uh some sort of programming, is that right? A program that would help expedite her, her functions. Uh, and so she's going to recommend that we pull that, uh, that, that person uh in favor of, of programming. So that may not be there uh here within the next couple of, of meetings.
Hmm, um, okay, and if we were, so you, you mean software?
Software, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, software.
And I would assume software can't then come out of that youth fund?
Right.
Suzie, is that correct, too, like according?
Yeah, software, we couldn't use a youth fund to pay for it, we'll have to use something else.
Okay. And what else was on that, that short list of things that we had earmarked for that, for the youth funding? Suzie, do you remember? I mean, I don't have those notes in front of me. I, I know you don't either, but um.
None, no, I don't remember anything else specifically, only that part-timer that's sticked out in my mind.
Well, okay, well, all I wanna say is like, I'm, I mean, I think this youth funding that comes from waste management, like, is, is a, is a great source of revenue to, to use for the parks. Like, I, I mean, obviously, it's a perfect fit, I just don't, I feel uncomfortable not having in front of us, like, did we already allocate that to things that are part of the budget we passed? That's the only thing that makes me uncomfortable.
Sure, very good, very good. We'll, we'll figure that, we'll, we'll, we'll get a, a concrete answer for you on that case.
Okay.
Any other question?
Otherwise, yes, and like, let's spend that money on things that are for kids. Let's do it.
Now, we, we have events, you know, like the Kid Fish event when, when we did it, and of course, that event, if Tink was here, you know, that would be an annual thing, so that's up to council, whatever events you guys want to continue or, or discontinue, I don't know, so I mean, that, when Tink was here, that was almost like an annual thing. Be- because that event was successful, according to him, so I, you know, it's, it's entirely up to council.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Go ahead, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I think that Kid Fish are, is something that Kipel Mark Beautiful is intending to support. So that's number one, right, if I'm mistaken, Amanda?
I think so.
But, but number two, Suzie, clarify something. This youth fund allocation from waste management is a part and separate from the waste management allocation that goes to support Bayou Fest?
That is correct.
Different.
Yeah.
Different.
Yeah, we, we uh, we allocated fifty thousand dollars to Bayou Fest yearly and twenty-five thousand to this youth fund. Now, what we can do, council, uh, let me, let me stop there and ask, Miss Yancey, you're good, do you have any questions? Okay, what we can do uh is uh uh allow our direct administration to go out for bids, because we'll have to have this bid. We'll come back with uh, with those finalists and the recommendation, and at that time, that will give Suzie a chance, Casey, to research, uh, Chief Argon a chance to research, Kiara a chance to research the minutes to see if there were any other allocations, and then we can, uh, once we get more information, we can decide from there. Uh, but the goal is, like we, like we've said before, the goal is to make sure that our parks are operational. Our young people in this community don't have a whole lot to do, uh, and when that happens, they are in jeopardy, right? Uh, so this, again, is part and parcel with a safer city, uh, activity, activity, activity. So.
Mayor, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hobbie, is the, what's the field situation like out there? Is it, is it as bad as the fences?
I would say so, we don't really want anybody on there just cuz, um, major liability. There is one field that's on the backside of the football field that people have been going out there practicing on. There has been a team that's been bringing in dirt and keeping it clean. Um, we had a run-in with them, run-in with them once before, just to tell them to pick up their trash, other than that, there was no issues. Um, they were maintaining it, it's a hit or miss whenever they come and go. Uh, but the other three fields, I would not suggest anybody to play on.
Okay, so that's something else that, that needs.
Yeah, isn't it?
And now that, that's where Mr. Steven comes in.
And so, but, if y'all mind, don't forget, when we, when we remanned the football field, we went out for sponsorships. And we got quite a bit of feedback from the public, um, a lot of help, a lot of free help, a lot of free items donated to us, uh, supplies and money. So let's not forget that you have local business uh owners here that do wanna help remand those fields. Um, also, I served on the Texas City Little League for several years, um, as a board member. This is the time that the plants like to give money away for their youth funds, their donations, okay? So I think they have till February to expense those funds, right now would be a good time to try to hit them all up. We do have a pipeline that runs through here, Dow, I don't see why we can't try to hit them up and see what they have to offer.
Right, another thing, too, is Grant Works for, uh, cuz I'd love to see those fields turfed.
Absolutely.
Turf, turf fields are expensive, though.
It's very expensive.
But at the TML conference, they had playground equipment manufacturers out there. They had people that would do AstroTurf.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's something we can ask Grant Works to check into, too.
Sure.
Grants for that stuff, too, so, cuz like, a, a baseball field's like a million dollars, just to turf it.
Yep, and I, I know it was being discussed when we were discussing the, the Parks Master Plan was the turfing, and I think we kinda dropped that just because it's just, it's taken away from the overall project of everything, so.
I do have to say, I think that is brilliant, um, Amanda, asking about, like, we should hit up the plants that are in our backyard. Like, definitely.
Really?
Absolutely, and, and Steven uh is, is here because he, uh, Just Dogs uh has uh pledged to work with uh members of the community to help bring those fields back to a playable condition, is that correct?
Yes, a hundred percent. So we have, uh, right now, we have four teams, and we are in charge of keeping up the Hitchcock Little League fields and a field at the Chaparral Park. So we, we're already keeping up fields, so the only reason we have them is cuz COVID has stopped the leagues. So now the leagues are starting back up, we're losing our fields. So we're in desperate, desperate need of fields. We have, you know, fifty kids that are, are looking for fields, and we have a lot of other kids that, that wanna come and play for us, and we're looking to expand to another uh softball team next year. My daughter's five years old, when she gets, we're gonna do another, uh, hopefully another team for her in a couple of years. Uh, we have an eleven U, we have, we actually have a team from Pearland that's willing to bring their whole team to come down here and be a part of our organization here. So the softball fields will help us out a lot as far as getting fields for these girls to play on. Uh, the next thing is, is baseball fields, we're in desperate need of baseball fields with lights. So that would be the next thing that we're trying to get. But right now, we, we wanna work on these softball fields and get them playable. We will do, our motto is whatever it takes. So we'll do whatever it takes to get these fields to help y'all out, we'll definitely take care of them. We'll make sure that we're working the fields while we're out there. Uh, we're, we're gonna work alongside with the Little League, getting them started and helping them out, keeping the fields going for them. The Little League doesn't go throughout the whole year, so, you know, in those three months in between seasons, we'll be out there taking care of the fields. So they'll be taken care of, and we have, we're, we're looking at a ten, fifteen-year commitment, maybe even past that.
You, you're a nonprofit, five oh one C three?
Uh, for profit, I believe.
You're a for-profit entity.
We're, our, our organization, the president's not here, but I'm, I'm one of the coaches that, he had a practice tonight, so I had to come out here.
So y'all don't, y'all don't, y'all don't, y'all don't receive monies for profit, right?
He has a clothing line that he does, that's Just Dogs Clothing Line, but our select team, we, I, I don't know the details of it, of the monies, but we uh, we collect fees and it, it's all spent towards the kids.
Okay.
So his, his clothing line is, is separate from that.
Yeah, yeah, sounds like, sounds like what y'all are doing is a nonprofit situation, but obviously, we'll have to, we'll have to, before we enter into an agreement with you guys, we'll have to get that part clear. Yeah, that has, that part has nothing to do with us getting the fields ready, the fencing and the lighting. That has to be done anyway.
Right.
So, yeah, that's fine.
You charge your girls or boys to pit play?
We charge them a fee, with, the fee goes towards uh tournament fees and uh equipment, it doesn't, it doesn't go to us.
Well, as the mayor said, I think we need more information in that one.
Yeah, yeah, so let's, let's do this. Any other questions, guys?
No, I would just encourage you, it, w- once you find out about being a five oh one C three, HEB is seeking organizations like yours to donate to, and that, and I, I can get with you and give you a contact that I have.
Okay, yes.
So, so this is a two-parter, let, let's do this, let's entertain a motion uh to uh direct staff to uh bring us three bids on what it would take, the cost of refencing three fields. Uh, and secondly, uh, a, a bid on, uh, three bids on what it would take to uh upgrade the lighting, uh, where it's op- operational, right? Uh, and also, let's direct the staff in this motion to make contact with, uh, to Casey's point, uh, uh, chemical refineries in our region, in our area, as well as any other large employers that uh, that have a history of donating uh to youth organizations, to see if we can get some help with this. Is that, did I get it, Casey? Is that what you were, okay, all right, that's the motion. Did you get it, Kiara? I'll entertain that motion.
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Here now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now at item eight, uh, eight A and eight B. Eight A, eight reports, eight A, discussion relating to judicial facilities and technology updates. Would that be Kyle, or would that be?
Kyle, you, you've covered that pretty good the last time I was reading on, sent something out recently on the cost for the bulletproof and all that. So on the judicial, uh, for the court to move over to City Hall, they, they requested that there be bulletproof. Glass installed, along with bulletproofing the walls. We reached out to Den Ho at the time to get our engineer come over there to, because contractors would not bid on any of it without having ex, an engineer drawing of how the bulletproof needs to be installed. Um, and then we looked at doing a police department. So in that line, we talked to the engineer, the design engineers that we interviewed, actually, um, about it, and they said that, you know, bulletproof glassing has went up in pricing, and there's a lot of different ways to do it. Uh, however, uh, since we were looking at doing the police department, we postponed it until we got the engineering company to kinda go over that.
Had Alex crew down there and Kyle and I talked about it. Kyle's correct. We could, it's millions of dollars almost to bulletproof that court.
Yeah.
With Alex, you know, we talked about it, perhaps putting courts in there. It happens all over the United States. You have courts on one side and police on the other side. Sometimes they even have fire in it, but we have a fire department. So it's, it might be, uh, in our best interest to wait and see what happens with the bond. Going to save millions of dollars and be in a new facility, so we might want to entertain that idea.
Yeah. Any questions for, for Kyle or Chief Argon as relates to this item?
I concur with the chief. It would make more sense to wait.
To wait for the bond?
I just don't want to lose sight of what us as a council reached out and told the court system we're gonna do for them.
Yeah.
I don't want them to feel backburned by us.
Sure.
So I want to make sure we make, we honor all of our commitments that we made. So, but I agree with chief, it would make more sense to wait and see what happens with the bond issue.
Okay, very good, very good. Any other questions or comments? Are, are we all in agreement that we will, will wait till the, till the, uh, results of the bond?
Agreed.
Very good. Uh, we'll get out of here before ten. Eight B. Discussion relating to managerial audit. If you all remember, uh, this past summer, we had a change in leadership in our city manager's office. There was a lot of controversy that surrounded this, these departures. Uh, and so one of the things this council decided to do was we decided to task our city attorney with a managerial audit. This was to look back over the last two years of our city's history. And to look at various areas of operation to see if in fact there were any issues with our, uh, management. And the city attorney was tasked to find those issues, uh, to report those issues. Uh, and then to craft a direction for us to move in which those issues would then be resolved. Tonight is an update of that managerial audit. Uh, this council in a few minutes will be asked to set a meeting that we would thoroughly, thoroughly, uh, go through these issues of the past two years. But tonight Gus will give us a healthy update. And certainly council would be able to ask questions tonight. But remember, uh, the bulk of our work on this issue perhaps would come in, in a more focused setting. Where there would be more information, uh, shared in the form of text messages and things of that particular nature to help assist us in our questioning. So I'll turn this over to Gus. Uh, I believe you have six areas of findings that you want to share with us?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And as, as, as you said, Mayor, throughout this entire process, we have been proposing and working with city staff to address the issues as they are at this council's direction going forward. And I will also, as I step through these items, um, discuss the steps that are being taken and can, and continue to be taken. So first, I'm going to begin with the issue of records management. The city did not have a formal records retention policy. The city also, it was clear what, uh, began conducting city business through text message, specifically iMessage on personal phones. The personal phones, um, per, I use personal in quotation marks. These were actually phones that, um, exec, that upper management received, uh, cell phone stipends for. So these are city records, uh, let's be clear. The, the issue with that, it, it, well, let's, first I'll discuss what the city is doing now. The city now, um, under both Mr. Carey and now Chief Aragon's direction, city staff conducts business through Ring Central and through Microsoft Teams. Both of those allow the city to log communications. The net, the reason for, the reason, the importance for that is to allow, as, as we get later on, once succession issues, and it also allows, um, people to just know what's going on, because when we have, as, as happened this past year, people walk out the door, sometimes we're left not knowing exactly what's going on. So the, the, the record, so that's why we are working with the records retention policy. We, we plan to bring that to council. And we're also logging, we, the city has purchased software to log them and conduct business that way. It's become clear through the, through records, records requests that we've received and text messages attached to those, that certain individuals and city management did not preserve all their text messages and turn them over. Those individuals are no longer here. The city has undertaken the steps we are required to take in an attempt to secure those under state law. That process continues to this day, but the important part is that it, it has become very clear that there are messages that are no longer there. Does, does, the, the content of those, we can guess, we can surmise, but it, it, it is clear that they are not there. And that is concerning from a records management perspective. Moving on to the succession planning, there was a push to have all of the departments have a succession plan, but as things turned, for lack of a better term, sour in this, I, I actually don't want to even use the term sour. There was a, there was a distrust of of the council that, and that distrust was fermented by upper management. The, the why of that, I, 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 I don't know, because as council is very well aware, there are only three individuals or entities that council controls. They are Kiara Nance, well, four, uh, the city clerk, the mun- the municipal judge, city manager and the city attorney slash prosecutor. No one else is obviously ultimately answerable, but the council does not retain the authority over them. So I, it's unclear why that distrust was fermented, but it was. And it appears to have been effective, given the walkout that occurred, well, walkout, the mass exodus. There's also an issue with the twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two budget. It began late, um, last year. Yeah, I, I spoke extensively with Suzie about this. There, there was an issue with the software that delayed it. But normally it began in April. Um, this year it was kind of July that department heads finally got everything in. And the, and an important issue with that, that I, that the mayor dealt with a lot is the CBA negotiations with the police. The police in December of two thousand and twenty one, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty conveyed to management their desire to negotiate economic terms. Management and Suzie Koo did not learn of that letter. New management, and importantly Suzie Koo, the preparer of the budget, did not learn of that letter until September. With, when the first meeting with the police evening occurred. Obviously that created a huge issue because those negotiations should have been done for, much sooner and much sooner to allow the city to budget accordingly. We were, the city negotiating team was put in a position of while, while ultimately it was worked out, the city negotiating team was put in a position to, of negotiating and then having to also come to council if necessary to amend the budget. Ideally, the police, a- and, and the police were, this, this is not to cast aspersions on their union. Their union was very understanding and professional and worked with us. But those raises ideally would have been built into this year's budget so that everyone could know and that the city, the city manager, the city finance director could, could budget accordingly. Not doing so put the city and the police candidly in a pretty tough situation, just because of the, the funds had already been allocated. And then everyone was going to have to come back and say, oh no, now we want them back. It's a, it's a, a- and, and the, the same with the fire. Moving on to the, uh, there, there was an issue, um, with, uh, former mayor having a city vehicle and a city gas card. That procedure began apparently under Ms. Butler. It continued up until, um, Mayor Bell, I discussed it with him. He would never had nor was offered a city vehicle or gas card. But it continued up until Mayor Hawking left. Finance right now is analyzing how much, um, we know how much the city vehicle costs. They're analyzing the gas card so that we can report to the city how much gas was used. And we have those records. They're just pulling them. Purchasing, there's been, there have been some allegations regarding employee credit cards. The auditors are currently, the new auditors are currently reviewing them now, at, right now to ascertain, um, were they actually used for emergency supplies or not. Um, and, and at, at this moment, I take them, everything that the city does financially, financially speaking is reviewed by the city auditors, um, is done every year. So it's, it's not just Suzie making these decisions. And then finally, there's the issue of staffing. Specifically, the, um, there were positions in the manager's office that were not in the budget. They were just funded out of the fund balance, which is concerning because generally, and Suzie can speak more to this as from a financial perspective, but your fund balance is for emergencies and, um, it, it's there for your bond covenants as well. You're, you generally don't want to fund operations out of your fund balance because it, it's like you're going into your savings account to then fund normal operations. It, it's not the best idea from a fiscal perspective.
We had the same conversation about funding police officers.
Right. A- a- and so it, it's for, and, but the thought was, well, we'll just fund it out of the fund balance and then put them in the, in the budget next year, which is it, it, you know, y- you generally don't want to, um, well, it, it's not following with what the approved budget was. So, I mean, we, we don't have much of a fix there, other than if you want to amend the budget or do something that's not in the budget that council approved, go back to council. So that, that's generally what we found. Like I said, all of these issues, we are in the process of now working with staff to fix. Because what, what we didn't want to happen and what the direction we had from council in general is a, a best practices and transparency. So we want to work with staff to propose fixes sooner rather than later.
Very good. Let's, let's clear some things up and, and make some things plain so that council can, if they so choose, ask questions. Uh, let's go back to record, records management, Gus.
Yes, Mayor.
You said that the city, and when you say the city, we're talking about upper management. Is that correct?
For what?
Uh, records management, uh, uh, the city did business, uh, over text messages.
Upper management.
So let's, let's make it plain. We're talking about, uh, the former city manager, uh, and the, on the director level, basically.
Yes, it, it appears that there was a group text message.
They did, they did business via text message.
Correct. A- and, and, and when I say business, I, 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 just so that everyone, like even, like, there's a broken, there's a pothole, please go pave it. That would be city business.
Right, right, right. So they did, they did city business via text message. Now, we have text messages from a good portion of our directors. Let's say David Jordan. We have all of David Jordan's text messages that we know.
We believe we do.
We believe. The good, the bad and ugly. Whatever he's text, we got it, right?
Mr. Jordan returned his.
Okay, and, 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 and I believe, uh, uh, Mr. Mr. Kirk Jackson did as well, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so, but then you said, well, let's go back. You said that, uh, they did business, city business over text messages. But the policy said that you are not to do, as, as a matter of fact, the previous city manager created a policy that said that you were not to do business via text message. Is that correct?
The policy directed that items be, that business be done over Teams, uh, over Microsoft Teams, yes.
Okay, so, so, so the, the former management violated their own policy.
It appears that way, yes.
Okay, now, here's, here's, as we get deeper into this, you said that they, that all of the text messages were not submitted.
That, there, it, there were screenshots of text messages that were submitted by former chief widemen that have, that are, that have been, that show certain members, certain individuals received them. However, when I reviewed those individuals, text messages they submitted to me, they were not there.
So at least one member of this group, uh, somehow didn't turn in all of their text messages.
It appears that way.
And, uh, we know that because the other members of this group turned in text messages that had messages that should have been from this member's phone and we didn't find any.
It, they are messages that should have been on both, in, on all parties' phones, and they were not on certain parties, correct?
Is, is that consistent? And I know, I know, I know you're gonna, uh, answer this in a way that'll keep you safe. Is that consistent with people deleting text messages?
That is consistent with people not producing what they are required to produce.
And you said that we are, we are pursuing, uh, those, those, uh, messages and those records with every, uh, tool that we can use under state law.
Correct.
So we will get those text messages.
Yes.
So that they can paint a clearer picture.
Yes.
Okay, second thing that I heard you say. You said that, uh, there was a succession plan in place.
Succession.
Succession plan, I'm sorry, succession plan in place, uh, which meant that when people leave our city, when, let's say, Chief Argon leaves, uh, the position of police chief, there should be a plan in place to replace him.
Yes, yes, for, for all departments, not, not just the city managers. I believe Kyle, Kyle, in fact, I know Kyle has one for his department, uh, emergency management and.
And, 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 and Kiara Nance is a result of that succession plan, right? The reason that she is here is because it was planned, not by this council, right? But by administration that when Robin retired, Kiara, uh, if she qualified, would be the next, uh, city clerk. So that plan's been in place. But then you said that there was a distrust of this council that was fermented by upper management.
Yes.
Can you explain?
Yes, there was, there was a distrust, uh, it, it appeared, the messages that were returned, that were turned over indicate that there was a distrust of this council, um, specifically a desire to not have meetings in City Hall when, uh, the mayor was present. And, and that sort of thing. Now, the how and the why of that, all, all, as I said, it, it is apparent that there was a distrust. And in speaking with certain former members, if they, their meetings were held offsite.
So they were, th- this group, this, this manager and these directors were meeting.
Correct.
And if the mayor was in the building, they would move the meeting to a different location.
That, that happened on at least one occasion, yes.
Okay. Also. also, this, this idea of, let me ask you this, let me ask it in this way. Were you able to ascertain any information that, uh, would be relevant to this mass exodus of directors on July the 2nd, 2021?
Well, there, there was, there was a meeting, um, there was an off-site meeting, uh, confirmed by Mr. Carey. As I said, there was a distrust of this council that came from upper management and i- it's unclear why that distrust was there because of, as I said, this council only d- does not, the directors are, do not serve at the pleasure of the council. So i- i- it, it appears it was there, but I can't, I, I, it appears, I know where it came from. I do not understand the rationale for it, if that makes sense. The, the individual's rationale, given the fact that they didn't report to the council.
Were, were there any text messages, Gus, where, uh, upper level directors, uh, were, were being coerced uh, uh, or manipulated, uh, into resigning out of some sort of undue fear?
There was, there was that, it, it was not only that, Mayor, it was actual conversations that were confirmed about Mr. Carey.
Let's make this plain. So the reason, a- as far as we can understand it, the reason that there were, uh, five folks, uh, six folks resigning on one day is because one of those members, uh, one of the city managers, uh, basically, uh, was coercing other department heads to resign. Uh, and the rationale was some sort of fear that this council would fire or terminate those directors. And what you said was, and what our charter is, is this, the council cannot fire a police chief or a fire chief or an assistant city ma- even a developmental services director. The only two people in that group that was in jeopardy of being terminated by this council, and I don't mean jeopardy like there was a jeopardy, but that could actually be terminated by this council, was the city manager, uh, and the city attorney who had dual roles. The rest of them could not be fired by this council because that's a violation of charter, of the charter. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor, yes.
So even though we could not act legally to terminate them, they were being told by somebody in the city manager's office that if they stayed, they would be fired by this council. And that's why they left.
That, that's correct.
Okay. I wanted to make, I want to make sure we get this as crystal clear as we possibly can. Now, let, let's move, let's down to this place of, of this, uh, city vehicle and this gas card. Uh, and so did you find in any way, shape, or form that, that this council or the previous council, uh, in any way gave permission to or afforded the former mayor a vehicle?
No, there appear, and I spoke with not only Robin, but then Kiara, uh, there, there appears no city policy that, where the city authorized any council member or the mayor who is a member of the council to have a city-issued vehicle and/or city-issued gas card that was paid for by the city.
In your research, was there ever any indication in any meeting minute, any documentation, or any way, shape, or form that this council knew that we were acquiring a vehicle for the previous mayor? Did you find that in any documentation?
This council, no. The, the only indication, um, were discussions that it was brought to Tink Jackson or former management's attention. It was also brought to his attention. Uh, the finance director informed him that a new vehicle was here for Mayor Hawking. Um, I understand that certain former council members brought it to Mr. Jackson's attention to be put on an agenda, but it was never done uh, by Mr. Jackson and it was never, he never brought it to the council as a whole.
Would you reveal who those council members were?
Sure, it wa- it was Mayor Bell, who was then the mayor pro tem and, uh, the former, I understand that former, uh, the former council member for District B, Chris Lane.
Christopher Lane, yes.
Also brought it to Mr. Jackson's attention.
This is important. In this, in these text message discussions between Suzie, sorry Suzie, and, and the former, uh, management, m- a member of former management, at some point, the vehicle was not allocated to the mayor, the former mayor as of yet. And, and so there was this period of time where, where the vehicle was here, but it hadn't been given to the mayor yet. And, and who was the city manager, manager during that time?
Uh, it would have been Tink Jackson and, and it, the, the issue that Suzie raised was who is the vehicle for? And it was believed, my belief from the messages was it was, they thought it was for Mayor Hawking. There was no response, which you would generally expect to see as well. Elected mayors don't get vehicles. There's no city policy for that. Um, that was not the response. The response was generally, well, let's figure out who it is. It might be his. Um, so, uh, apparently the mayor had specifications for the vehicle he wanted. But the former mayor, um, uh, but, uh.
And, and let's be clear, having a, go ahead, go ahead.
Regardless, the, the issue of assigning a vehicle was brought to former management's, uh, attention and a new one was assigned.
And so, uh, I want, I want to be clear on this. So although the previous, previous
Right.
City manager Butler, uh, worked with the budget to provide this vehicle. It was not delivered to Mayor Hawking, uh, before Mr. Jackson's tenure. And so.
I believe it was a new one that was, he had one, Enterprise replaces, um, and I'm hesitant to speak too much about the fleet program here, but Enterprise replaces vehicles periodically and this was a new one that Enterprise had delivered.
Right. So, so my, I guess my point would be that if this is a violation of city char- of the city charter, there was a moment then that the former city manager could have stopped this allocation and, and, and redirected it to another department or even returned it to Enterprise. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Let me bounce down to the last, uh, portion of this and then we'll open it up for, for council. Um, these two assistant city managers, uh, you said that they were, they, their salaries were paid for out of the reserve fund.
Correct.
Which is our, basically, for those of us that don't know, that is like the city's savings account. And so like if you were at home, you had a savings account, the reserve fund is our, basically, for lack of a better term, our savings account. And so you don't pay salary out of your savings account. You, you pay salary out of the maintenance and operations side of your budget or out of the enterprise fund, but never out of your reserve funds. Is that correct?
I'll, I'd be, in discussions with Suzie, from a financial perspective, funding ongoing operations out of a, out of the fund balance is not a good idea. Because as I said, it, it's there for emergencies, one-time expend, capital expenditures, those sorts of things, not payroll.
And, and the last question before I open it up to council, we, we will have a more extensive meeting on this. But you have, uh, text messages, uh, and other items of, of evidence and information to back up your findings?
Yes.
Okay, okay, very good. Council, do we have any questions for Gus?
I do have a couple of follow-up items. The issue of the city vehicle, the, when, what has a, is the issue, the fact he was, he had this vehicle full, all the time, full-time?
Yes, and the city issued him.
For personal purposes?
I, we don't know what he was using it for, but the city issued a vehicle to a elected official who's supposed to serve without pay, without compensation. Um, that gas card was used, um, uh, we're figuring out how much, but it was a vehicle that was issued for personal, that was used, we believe, for personal purposes. And we're trying to get to the bottom of that.
Okay.
But regardless, no other council member has a city vehicle and there's not a policy often for council members to be off, uh, issued those.
So what follow-up on that one? In the event of a declared emergency, the mayor is our, uh, senior emergency
Correct.
Director. And, uh, in those situations, I guess the city, you're saying, we don't have a policy that would permit the mayor as our emergency manager to have access to a vehicle in his official capacity?
So.
And from my experience, that would be important.
Well, yes, a- and, and I'll, I can speak a little to that. Um, the mayor is the Amer- emergency management coordinator for purposes of state law and declaring natural disasters, but the emergency management coordinator now is Kyle Hunter. Um, he is the individual, um, in consultation with the mayor who, uh, while the mayor op- activates the emergency operations center and sits on, in on all the calls and is involved in those discussions, it's from a staff level, it's Kyle. Uh, and while sometimes it'd be the city manager, given the city manager turnover, it, it's Kyle, right? It's Kyle right now.
Well, I'm just suggesting in a, at a practical level, from my experience where I'm at those E O Cs at the county or it could be wherever, the elected official is usually there in attendance. Okay, the, the, who was there? And in those instances, I would encourage us to consider a policy where the elected person who's there officially attending those meetings should be in a city vehicle. Why? If I pull up in my, uh, non-Red Cross vehicle and I'm trying to enter into a disaster area like Galveston, I'll have to go through a lot of rigamarole to get into there. Actually, there are a lot of calls. If I pull up in my Red Cross vehicle, I'm waved right through. So it just, so that, there's a purpose there of that. And I hope that perhaps we could, we could develop a policy with regard to that.
So we do have a vehicle, uh, for the emergency management director, which is the mayor, um, allocated for him if needed during an emergency event.
All right, great. And then, uh, and so I guess here's also finally, Gus, having gone all through this, uh, what is it, management audit situation? What's our ultimate goal? I mean, we have some findings, but are, are we wanting to pursue? Uh, is that something that, that ultimately will be brought back to the council for us to determine, Mr. Mayor?
Pursue, when you say pursue, may I approach?
Pursue, pursue any, either legal remedies or report them to whomever, you know, that there's a possible violations here of, of policy or whatever? Or are we just saying, look, we found some weaknesses during this period of time?
Yeah.
Uh, we want, uh, our department people, especially heads to know that this department is not, that this city council, not only this city council, but future city councils have no role in your, in your hiring and your firing.
Right.
And, uh, so we want you to be clear on that. And so that's, I guess, what I'm trying to understand, what the ultimate goal.
I think it's too faux. I think, I think Gus's, uh, purview was to, uh, make findings uh, and make recommendations to move the city forward in a way that we wouldn't be found in these places again. I think that is incumbent upon this council to, as, as those findings become clear and concise, and as we are able to, to feel them, touch them, to hold them, uh, then we would have to make the determination on who we would want to refer these findings to. Uh, for example, if, if there's a finding, which we know that there is, that the mayor, uh, former mayor, uh, operated a vehicle outside of the city charter, uh, then that's a charter violation and we have to find what those remedies are for the charter, right? Uh, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know if we would be able to recoup, uh, if there are any, uh, any, uh, monies, uh, that are associated with fuel usage. Uh, I don't know if we would be able to recoup those, but this council, it will be, uh, this council that will decide how we will respond to any, uh, any violations that rise to the level of, 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 breaking the law, if you will, uh, or, or, uh, costing the city, uh, taxpayer dollars. I think that it'll be us that will decide where we take that information from here.
Yes, I, I would echo what the mayor said. My, my role in this is to ultimately identify weaknesses, issues, and propose fixes because if we don't propose fixes, then we.
Thank you.
And then you. I do have something that I need to say. I, I know that we requested this managerial audit, uh, back in September because there was a lot of community unrest about why people left the way that they did. It's unfortunate. But I believe a lot of what we're dealing with now is the residue of that, but as, as it had been stated, I'm, I'm ready to go forward, uh, to progress. Because councils make mistakes, people make mistakes. But let me say this, before you call people crooked a criminal, you better look at the past of Lamar. And there's a lot of things that are being said by few, not the masters, uh, that, that are very, uh, uh, it's, it's not fair. And so, uh, when they left, I was one of the ones that asked for a magen- uh, a, an, an audit to see why did they leave? What's, what's going on? Let's get some facts, not fiction, but facts. So I thank you, Gus, for doing that. I know it's been like six or five months ago that we did request that. And that's just because too much, uh, fiction has been tolerated. And it's time for us to start celebrating the truth of the matter. We are at a very critical stage. I'm ready for Lamar to go to the next level. And we cannot go to the next level badgering one another. And so, uh, I have a lot of respect for the former mayor. I have a lot of respect for the people that served. It's not easy to serve. But people are human. They make mistakes. The question is, let's, let's go forward. That, that, that's what I, what I, I think, Mayor. I think it's good to know so you can let people, uh, uh, understand our own humanity. We're not perfect. No mayor is perfect. But let's be very careful about the level that some of us are taking, this criminal thug ghetto, those unprofessional, just dogmatic gutter type talk. Especially now that we have these findings. Thank you, Gus.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, I just have one question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Mr., Mr. Gus, out of all your findings, were, are any of those criminal or no?
I, I'm hesitant to say, to, to give an opinion on that. Um, there are issues, um, uh, be- because we don't know the level, um, of the amount of money.
Whenever, whenever you're ready, we'll, we'll start again. Did it say one second?
One second.
One thousand one, all right.
Give, the certain issues with the amount of money involved, we're still trying, uh, the auditors are still looking at that.
Okay, but other than that issue, in your opinion, any other findings? Are they criminal in nature or just unethical per se?
Unethical and, uh, poor.
Poor judgment?
Poor judgment, um, and not conducive to good government or good, best practices.
Okay. That's the only question I had because I'm ready to move forward. We gotta bring the city moving forward together.
And, and I, I, and I think we do, we, we do move forward. Uh, I, I think that, uh, the way things happen. Uh, I, I think that, uh, the way things happened last summer uh, and, and some of the accusations, uh, that were, uh, brought, uh, uh, because of those, uh, defections, uh, where it was, uh, styled and fashioned uh, in a way that would call into question, uh, our integrity. Uh, I think that any transparent government would do their due diligence. And, and, and look at what we found. There is no arguing with text messages, no arguing with other bits and pieces of information that have been found. Uh, and it has nothing to do with, uh, uh, demonizing a former city manager or even a former mayor. It has everything to do with making sure that we are providing truthful, transparent information to our community. That's it. And the only thing that I'll say, because I am certainly focused on safe city. Uh, I am, I am, uh, I am hyper-focused on safe city. I am, uh, obsessed with safe city. Uh, the only thing that I will say is this, I, my prayer for our community uh, is that we are able to receive the facts and then form the opinion. Did y'all see that? First you receive the facts, and then you form your opinion on what those facts are. But we get into trouble as a community when we form our opinion first. And then we start to try to manipulate the facts to be consistent with our opinion. That's the downfall of any and every community. And so tonight, again, this is not to hurt anybody, not anybody at all. This is to give factual information so that opinions can be formed. And the truth of the matter is this, this council had nothing to do with the, the departure of those directors. It sounds like it was an internal issue that was being perpetuated, not this council. The truth of the matter is this council, nor did the council that Mr. Mitchich was a part of, nobody approved for any elected official to receive any benefit. Number one, that's against the law, and it doesn't matter. We can all up here approve for Joe Compey on to ride around in three city vehicles. We can vote on it, yell it, scream it. If it's against the law, then the vote doesn't count. That's how it works. So I could not, Casey could not, Robert could not, Christopher Lane could not. Uh, and who was the other council member with us? Uh, Mayor Hocking, duh, duh. None of us could approve for any of us to, to operate a city vehicle. It didn't happen. In fact, the opposite happened. And when we found out, we did what we needed to do to report it. That's clear. That's factual. And nothing was done. These are only six findings. There, 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 there are all sorts of findings within these six findings. Uh, we, we're not gonna bela- belabor the point that this was an update because members of the community had started to say, well, we hadn't heard anything, so maybe nothing was wrong. And so we ask us, please let the people know where you are with your, uh, audit so that they can understand what we're trying to present to them, uh, as far as information. Now, when we leave here tonight, we can go our separate ways and, and we can think all sorts of things. That's great. We get it. It's a democracy. But we're trying to provide you with the best information we can to show you a picture of what the last two years have been like, uh, for us, uh, in this administration uh, and, uh, for us on this council. Gus, when will you be able to return with, with?
The, uh, February meeting was, was our plan.
Do we need a separate meeting, uh, for, for your findings?
If, that's at the council's discretion and the council's pleasure, wouldn't?
Are we, are we thinking we need a, a second me, a, a separate meeting, guys, to, to go through these findings with, uh, Gus? We will have, uh, whatever evidences he has, text messages and things of that nature.
Is it, is this gonna be your final?
It will be the final, um, and my plan is to before, before it, uh, submit it to the council.
I think that may be the best, if it's gonna be his final report. Just to, that way he can submit his final report, take as much time as it needs. Um, that way we're not rushed, seeing as seeing as he doesn't, he can expand, ex- expound on whatever he needs to, so.
Sure.
So I think we, I think that would be the best course of action to give him the appropriate time he needs.
Very good, very good. Yes, ma'am. Approach Ms. Manette and give us your address for the five hundred and thirty-eighth time. I'm teasing. I'm teasing. You don't have to give us your address.
So my question is, all these facts and findings, when you're ready, when do we get to look at those and see those and see these text messages and see all of this stuff that's been found? When does the public get to say, oh, hey, we get to read this now?
That will be at that meeting, at, at the, at the February meeting. That'll be the larger, more comprehensive meeting. Yes, ma'am.
How many texts did they receive?
Mister Larry, you can approach and give your, your address, sir. Welcome.
Cedar Drive, how many texts were received and did you guys go through and who went through them?
In excess of forty thousand, I believe.
And how long did you go through them? How long did it take?
It, I, I couldn't give you a number off the top of my head. It was given to me in a searchable, in a searchable document.
How long did you have them?
Had them a week.
A week, you went through forty thousand text messages?
As I said, it was given to me in a searchable document.
Mister Mitchich, you may return, sir.
Our Mitchich, twenty-four North Curly, Mayor, uh, I'll remind you guys, I came from Big Brother. That's who I worked for forty-one years. We could monitor you from dusk to dawn to, um, every, everything. I heard in here about using text messages to do business that I believe under Ms. Butler, that was, you shouldn't do that or some, I think in today's technology, maybe that's something you'll reconsider, because, uh, you would hamstring yourselves. You know, even directors or, or the public, you respond to the public all the time in texts. I mean, and we're just, that's the way we live, but I would suggest maybe path forward, a monthly monitoring of, of such a thing. I, I mean, you know, even, even the city credit cards, you know, I mean, that's, we had to do that where I came from. There were some rules you didn't bend or break and, and, and it came with content and, but it may come down that you might have to provide a city cellphone to every elected official and to every other, you know, director head employee, but you're, you're going to need those in order to function efficiently. So, uh, that's just my suggestion.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Miss Mitchich. I, I believe that, uh, the former city manager implemented that, uh, uh, we don't.
Mister, Mister Kerry, and Kyle can speak more to it, but the city has procured a software that allows, um, I believe it's Ring Central.
Ring Central.
Uh, but allows for off-site logging of those messages, of, of those communications.
Okay, very good, very good.
Mayor, just to be clear, Gus, your report will be in written form. Correct.
Yes.
Then we'll, okay.
Yes. It, and, and, and Ms. Manette, it will definitely be, uh, uh, in a form that we can all share and look at and question. Uh, and I, and I think we'll be able to move with it. I think we'll have some good information that'll help us, help us move forward. So, any other questions? Well, we can, uh, council, we can schedule this, uh, for, again, for three P M. If you all would like on our regular meeting day in February. That would give us a couple hours. Uh, uh, do we need two P M? Three P M?
Is three hours gonna be good for Gus? You're gonna be all, present everything in three?
Yes, yeah, they, it's, uh, the council's pleasure.
Three P M.
I think three P M is, is ample.
Very good, very good. Please come forward. Give us your name, address, your social security, serial number off your bicycle. I'm just kidding.
Gus, these text messages that you say you got, um, is that gonna be for all the city employees that left? Mister Jordan and all the others, Mister Jackson?
Certain phones were returned to, uh, Kyle.
Come again?
Certain phones were returned when they left to Kyle.
Well, I know you say you had, um, Mister Jordan had returned his phone with all the messages. So will all that be available?
If somebody wants to, i- in the report, or if somebody wants to file an open records request, we would have to. If, if they were to do that, we would respond in accordance with the law. Does that answer your question?
Well, that's, that's it. Trying to see if there's any other questions that we have for you that we could help. Very good. Kerry, do you got the date? Okay, so now we're moving, ladies and gentlemen, to item nine, appointments. Discussion, possible action regarding appointments and or reappointments to fill various positions on boards and commissions. Are there any appointments, uh, tonight?
Yes, I have three.
Go ahead, Ms. Cross.
I'd like to appoint, uh, Mister Joel Camacho to the cemetery board. Ms. Kimberly Hall to the Keep Lamar Beautiful Board. And Mister Robert Stevenson to the planning and zoning board.
Robert, say last name again.
Uh, Stevenson.
Stevens. Do you have addresses on them or they, are they in the information?
They're in the information. Yes, sir. Uh, planning, uh, planning and zoning.
Very good. Any other appointments?
Yes, um, I have Grayland Alexander for the planning and zoning. Grayland Alexander. And then Alexa Cross for the Board of Adjustments. Alexa Cross. What are adjustments? That's all I have.
Very good. Your question?
I have, uh, to reappoint, I think I have four here, Ms. Jones. Uh, uh, reappoint, uh, Ms. Jones to the Board of Adjustments. And then reappoint Ms. Catherine Heron Keith uh, to the Keep Lamar Beautiful Commission.
Very good.
I have an appointment. Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, I spoke with Mister Crowder today and I'm happy to announce that I will reappoint Mister Bim Crowder to the cemetery board.
Look at that. Way to go, Bim. Any other appointments, Casey?
No, not today.
Very good. We will then second this, uh, these nominations. Do I have a second? Second to these nominations?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, any opposed? We're now on, uh, we don't have an executive session tonight, so we'll move past, uh, the executive session. So we're in item eleven. Requests and announcements from council. Uh, let's start with Councilwoman McCullough.
Yes, um, I just have one thing to say and, um, well, it's actually two-parter, and the first is an apology to some of my, well, to my fellow council people, and particularly the council people who have been enduring months and months of personal attacks on social media. Um, I am, and specifically I'm apologizing because I apologize that I haven't spoken up with my voice during this time that is allotted to me via my platform that I have and that I am privileged to hold as a, as an elected municipal leader. Um, my feelings about using social media as a bullying platform generally boil down to, I don't even want to give it the time of day. I don't want to give it any air or sunlight or attention. Cause I find it to be a toxic place and a medium that brings nothing but divisiveness if someone chooses to use that as a place to speak ill of someone else. And that goes for no matter who you're talking about. But I am very sorry to my fellow council people that I have not said something about my absolute shock and deep dismay about what has been happening on, particularly on Facebook. Um, the assassination of the characters of our mayor, Keith Bell, of Councilwoman Yancy, of Councilman Carlson. And I'm not aware of as many things that have happened against, um, Councilman Compean, but I mean, I just apologize to everybody, but in particular, um, and particularly those three. It's completely irresponsible. It's completely immature. And as I said, my feelings about it for the past several months have been, let's not give this attention. But I've seen in the ensuing months, the toll that this has taken on people who I know are just doing their best. Because that is all we can do. We are people who are elected to sit in positions and just try our best and to follow our integrity. And as Councilwoman, Councilwoman Yancy said earlier, and I think she said it very well, we're all human and we make mistakes. Nobody in any of our positions is doing anything perfectly, nor can we. But I do trust that everyone is just trying to do their best. And additionally, I have learned of more people in our community who are suffering personal assassinations, you know, of these attacks on social media, and it's disgusting. I wish it wasn't happening. And I don't have any control over it. But I do know that I want anyone who can hear my voice to say that I wish that you would consider the identity that you're giving our community by doing this. There's a million different ways to say, if you don't have something nice to say, don't say it at all. And truth is power. And we have mediums for people to share truth. Facebook pedals in non-truths, and it is not a medium for affecting good. And, um, so I will wrap that up by saying, I, I do hope that my fellow council people will accept my apology. I'm sorry that I didn't quite understand the magnitude of what was happening. And in particular, I think I need to apologize for um, not reckoning with it because I didn't have to. You know, I, I don't spend time on Facebook. I purposefully don't look at those mediums on a regular basis. I'm on and off to schedule posts for my various businesses. But also, I am not a black person. And I'm not the first black leader, ma- blackmail leader of our city. And the kinds of rhetoric that has been peddled has not all been racist. But it has very much the majority of it been. And I just want my council people to know that I support you. I apologize for not speaking up sooner and standing in solidarity with you and telling, like I said, anyone who can hear my telling, like I said, anyone who can hear my voice that I find it distasteful. And I'm going to do everything I can to support my fellow counsel. And to move us forward. Okay?
Ms. Cross.
Welcome to twenty twenty. So it's a new year. Where you been? Whoa. Hey, where's my take two? Welcome to twenty twenty-two. Whew. Time worked. Um. It's past ten o'clock, so past my bedtime. Um, just welcome to twenty twenty-two. It's a new year. It's a new motivation and new focus for everybody. So, um, I appreciate everyone that showed up to the council meeting today. As I've always said, get involved in your council, get involved in your, your city. So it was great seeing a, a packed full house. So please let it continue. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Casey, for that, for your intelligence and your integrity and being bold. Um, it has, it, you know, I've been here six months and it started that week later. After being a, being a, uh, sworn in, and I've asked people, is this normal? And, and I've been told that it's not, and I do not want this to be our new normal. Uh, because I moved back to Lamarck to make a difference in the lives of children. And to make a difference in the lives of, of a city that I've always admired growing up as a young girl in the Bay Area. So I love my home. I love where I live. I love my neighbors, the citizens. But I will tell you, because of the threats and harassment, my husband, who's a pastor, has for the first time had to do some things to protect my family. I've never had guns in my home. But because of the threats to my life and to my children, which I don't think people of Lamarck really wanted that, but when you do certain things, it, it wakes up the crazies. And in twenty-eight years of marriage, my husband has never had to do that because I believe that prayer works. And that's what we've been doing. And, um. This should not be scary to serve your government and to love your country the way that I love my country. But my husband is priest of our home. And his job is to protect his family. So to you, I say, be careful what you support. Be careful what you like. Because God is watching. But on the other note, it is a new year. It is. Because I believe you should celebrate good energy, right? Because karma has a way of following bad energy. Life is like a boomerang. What you put out, it comes back on you. So, uh, I, I want to say, let's stay positive. Let's continue to celebrate the good things. When the, the, our community is not perfect, no community is perfect. But let's, let's make sure that every decision we make, we think about our children, our youth here in the city. To our, to our fellow council people, I, I am proud to serve with you all, being the neophyte of this group, uh, to our staff that has stayed and has served in the midst of negativity. Thank you so much, and continue to smile and do the job that you do well every day. Our reward is not here. We can get awarded in the earth, but our ultimate reward is in heaven. And that's who, what's why we work, so that we can hear, well done, good servant. So that's what keeps me going. I'm not going anywhere unless the people tell me I can't do it. But it's up to the people to celebrate the ones who are doing a good work. This is your city. The, the beauty of democracy is that the people control it. And so my question to you is, do you want progress? Are you ready to go to the next level? Then let's do that, because we, we have been given all the tools we need to be successful. We've, we've been given that. And so, uh, Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you for tonight, and I'm continuing to pray for our amazing city.
Thank you, Ms. Yance.
Thanks, uh. Gus, uh, you tried, I think I mentioned it to your mayor, we still need a determination of whether we need to undertake redistricting.
I
Or do you know that already?
That was an email sent. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, then.
It's, it's not on the agenda, but, um, I, what I can say is, if the next election, I would be more than happy to give council an update on it, but there are things in motion.
Next meeting.
Yes.
The next meeting, not the, okay. Very good. And, uh, and I, and thank you all. I, I echo what, uh, council would. It's great to see everybody here, you know, that's outstanding, uh, especially the new faces. So I ask us all as a community to give each other our support to overcome our difficulties as we face them. And, uh, keep us together even when there's opportunities by some to try to, or anybody, anybody, I would say, anybody, to keep us apart. Uh, we're ultimately all children of the same maker, and, uh, and we can, we love each other. I certainly do, all of you. My doors are open to anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Temp. Um, again, Casey, thank you for your words of encouragement, uh, to myself and to the rest of this council. Means a lot, uh, for you to say those things. Uh, I know that you mean them, uh, and it's important for us to, uh, stand up and represent the type of community that we want to be, uh, and it's our job here as leaders to set that tone. We have a lot, uh, to be excited about in twenty twenty-two. Uh, as for me, the things, uh, that I will focus on in twenty twenty-two uh, would be, uh, our safe city initiatives. Uh, that is important, uh, to our community. And we have made, uh, significant investments, uh, in Safe City. We've made significant investments in our police department. Uh, we won't go over all of those here tonight. It's after ten o'clock. Uh, but we have done, uh, what the community has asked us to do, uh, by bolstering, uh, our police department. Now, uh, there is a debate, uh, that is being, uh, had even as we speak, uh, about, uh, taxation. Uh, and our community in May will have to decide whether or not, uh, we want to move forward, uh, with a tax rate uh, fifty-five, or if we want to roll back to a tax rate of forty-seven. Uh, it is this council's, uh, estimation, uh, and, and this council's action uh, that has declared that we believe the community uh, has tasked us with investing in, uh, Safe City, which means, uh, we had to make sure we expended those, those monies. Uh, because our city, uh, is in jeopardy. Uh, I know that some of us believe that that's, uh, some political spin, and, and I respect that that's what your belief is. Uh, however, uh, the facts, uh, associated with this, uh, then ought move us to a place that we understand that this is not fear mongering. Uh, just the other day, a young lady stabbed, I assume it was her significant other, to death. That was just last week. Uh, and, and, uh, the week before, there was a shooting. Uh, and, 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 and several weeks before that, there was another shooting. Uh, there is gunfire, uh, regularly. Uh, and so we know that there are stakes, there are high stakes. Uh, and, and I'm saddened by the idea that we would think that this is spin. We all have a right to our opinion. I respect each and every one. Uh, but this council is not providing these, uh, actions based on spin, but based on facts. Facts, right? Uh, this is twenty twenty-two, and we already have a murder. That's a fact. Right? Uh, and so we understand that. My focus is going to be to make sure that we move forward with these investments the council has made uh, in this community to make this community safer. Uh, I am focused on working on a bond issue, uh, bond election to provide for us a new, uh, police station, uh, as it is consistent with Safe City and a safer city. As well as working with, uh, uh, this city manager and our new city manager, right? That's, that's, that's right around the corner. Uh, uh, in, 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 uh, revamping, reorganizing our public works, uh, department so that they can be more efficient uh, and, and more productive, uh, working with, uh, Public Works Department and our Code Enforcement Department on being, uh, superior in our customer service response. We want to respond to our customer in, in a, in a more impactful way, and, and, in a, in a, uh, in a more efficient way, right? We heard you, we hear you, that you don't always feel as though you're being responded to in a timely manner or in a professional manner. We hear that at, at council. And so part of my work will be to work with our administration and with this council to provide a reorganization uh, for our Public Works Department, to provide customer service opportunities for our, our Public Works and our, our uh, uh, Code Enforcement, uh, Departments, because it's important. That is one of the biggest things that we face. Number one, uh, in my opinion, is crime. Number two is the work surrounding the fabulous people in our Public Works Division and excellent people in our Code Enforcement Division. Those folks need help. They need direction. They need resources. Uh, they need tools, and they don't need a necessarily a whole lot of financial resources as much as they need a lot of reorganization uh, and things of that nature. I want to work with them, uh, because I know that they are better than perhaps the, uh, the thought would be, uh, sometimes that they are. I believe in them, and I'm going to support them. Uh, secondly, uh, thirdly, uh, we have to, uh, do what's necessary to tackle our infrastructure issues. We have to. Uh, there is a bond, uh, I'm sorry, there is, there is a grant funding, several, uh, items of grant funding uh, that we have been awarded. Uh, the question is, uh, where are those monies in our budget? Uh, where are those monies in, 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 in any line item in our budget? And the answer to that is, although we have been awarded those, uh, they have not yet arrived in our coffers. And so we don't put them into our budget in any way, shape, or form until they arrive. Uh, and, and we're looking at, uh, uh, a, a, a good year before they arrive, because there are steps in between things that we need to do in order for the federal government to release those funds. So the answer to that question is, they're not here yet. Uh, as we know, you can be awarded something, uh, but the time of award is very different from the time of realization, right? And so that is the only reason they are not, they are not in our line item. Uh, I said all, all of that. And, and I'll say this, uh, as we move forward, uh, in this community this year, uh, I want to get to know many of you better. And I would love for you to know me better. There, there can be a lot of skepticism uh, in any community, right? Uh, we know that, uh, and there are a lot of opinions in every community. And so the way we cut through that, the way we get through that is, is, is we do what neighbors do. They sit down and they have conversations, and they talk, and they try to understand each other. And that's my goal for those members of our community that may be skeptics. Uh, I am more than willing, uh, and, and more than ready to sit down and have a conversation with each and every one of you. Get to know me. Get to know Mayor Pro Temp and Ms. Yancey and Mister Carlson and, and Ms. McAuliffe. Have conversations with us. We may agree or we may disagree. It's okay either way. So long as we are respecting one another, uh, and we're moving this city forward together. We won't always agree. Right? But if we can agree to move forward, then great things can happen in our community. And I believe that, and I know that. And I trust that with everything in my fiber and everything in my being. Now, let me say this. How long do I intend to serve? Eighteen years ago. After, after a very controversial vote. I received an email uh, from a member of the community that is in support of me today. And that email said that I cannot wait until the next election so that I can vote you out of office. This is what this person emailed me, and I said this to him, and I say this today. Uh, and I will continue to say this, there are two entities, two entities, Ms. Faircloth, that can remove me from office. One of them is Almighty God. And the second is the people of Lamarck. And I said this to this man. If either one of those entities decide that my time is up, I will gladly move to my next phase of service. I don't live and die by being the mayor. It is a very small portion of my life. My life is bigger than this. It doesn't bother me. It doesn't give me heartburn. I don't lose sleep over it. Because it's fun to serve your community. And if that ends, I'm flexible enough. And I'm sophisticated enough to move on to the next level of service. It won't break my heart. It won't destroy me because it is not my identity. And so if any and all folks decide that they want to threaten any of us, in particular me, let me speak for me. With my time here somehow coming to an end, it doesn't matter because I am so much bigger than being the mayor. I'm a human being with a wife and children and, and grandchildren. I have businesses. I have friends. I have relatives. All of that. So it doesn't matter to me one bit. Now, that's not to say, Ms. Jennifer, that I plan on going anywhere. I plan on working hard for the people of Lamarck. Uh, but let me say, those of you that are worried about me, understand and know that I'm built differently. And that I respond differently. And that the things that you may think bother me don't bother me at all. Because I know the God that I serve. And I know who he made me. And I know he has so much more in store for me than sitting behind this dais. This is a contribution I make to my community. Doesn't define me in any way, shape, or form. Here today, gone tomorrow. Councilman Osteen, I'm gonna be okay. Amen. Past offering. But we look forward to a brand new, bright and shiny twenty twenty-two. Chief, I know you had some things that you'd like to share.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, a couple of things first, uh, Omega Bay, uh, Mister Mitch Dick, in, in our community policing, uh, philosophy and realm, it usually starts with the most at-risk areas. Uh, I did that on my last run here many years ago. We're gonna do Lake Road n- north, which we'll be working on very shortly, Lake Road South, which is just below that area. Councilman Yancey knows what I'm talking about. We're gonna get you number three, okay? I think you guys need some attention. You remember me out there seven, eight years ago, did, did a good job. We need to make sure you understand that you're part of the city. You're not going anywhere. We're gonna protect you. So it's probably June, July, we're gonna be out there, and I'll be at your meetings every month, every single month. For your HOA, just like I'm doing at Mister Ginger's house, uh, place, at Saltgrass. Number two. We need some community watch chairpersons and, um, block captains for the Lake Road North. Uh, Councilwoman Yancey, I'll talk to you about that. Uh, we had Henry Wyatt, uh, I just can't see to get it home. I don't know where he's at, but, um, I've been to his house about three times, once today with Lieutenant Price. He was the, uh, block captain I wanted to serve as the chairperson. So if you live in Lake Road, call my number, nine three eight ninety-two, uh, nine two two zero. And that's my PD number, Andy, not the White House. I want your name, and I'm gonna go visit with you, and I need you to serve, because we're gonna kick that off, so please help me on that. Okay. Been said very aptly by Councilwoman McAuliffe, Councilwoman Yancey, and the mayor. We got some concerns about what's going on. We got some concerns about what's going on in our community. You know, terrorism can be taken two ways. One is something that injures you bodily and the other one is mentally. I don't believe with everything, I don't believe everything that our ex-president, Honorable President Bush said, but basically he said many years ago during the Iraq and Afghan crisis. If you're a terrorist or you support a terrorist, you're a terrorist. If you terrorize and my mayor, our councilman personally, or you supporting that, you're a terrorist. They already talked about how much they've been demeaned, talked bad about. Families have been involved. This is not necessary. We know who, you know who we're talking about. I have never seen division in a city in my entire 40 years as a law enforcement officer, 30 of which has been a police chief, never, out of six cities, sorry, eight cities in about six states. Kyle, put that on the board for me. This is my logo, our logo. We started this many years ago. It's called a partnership logo. I want you to look at that. A picture is worth a thousand words. Partnership at the top, two people shaking hands on the left side is police department and the right side is community. I want to build a partnership between the police and the community. And we have certain people that have been dividing our city for the last couple of years. I can't believe what's going on here. I in fact talked to one of them recently in the last few months and asked that you live here and your family lives here. Don't you want to keep this city together? You live here. And it was promised that this would happen and three days later it changed, went right back to normal. You know what I'm talking about. My department is, consists of a union. I'm not in the union, neither is Deputy Chief Wagner. The union is supporting what I'm about to say. And it's line and staff people, young officers up to lieutenants. They have said, if you're not allied, allied with our department and you're talking bad about our mayor, who's done much more than any mayor has ever done in existence in our city, or talking about our councilmen or councilwomen who are trying to keep us going, you're not an ally to our police department and you never will be. If you support those people, they have told me they're not going to ally with you, your family or your businesses. You know, we have 52 people in our department, geometrically, in three days, 1,500 people will probably be notified in a month, maybe the whole city of 18,030 people by those 52 people. So you need to jump aboard and support your police department and not talk bad about us. Because we're the only game in town. We need to keep you safe. We need your support. We don't need your division. So this is not just coming from Randall Aragon, your interim city manager and police chief. This is coming from your officers from the bottom to the top. This has got to cease. If you support these people, you're not allied with us. We had somebody bring something to our department as a gift. Dropping off some kolaches and some donuts after you talk bad about us and our mayor, who we care very dearly about. We don't want that stuff from you. We're going to tell you to leave. So just, just understand that. This is from the entire police department, Randall Aragon. It's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Chief, would you, would you remind us that the January tour of the police department, what date is that?
January 19th, 6:00 PM.
Is this it? Oh, I'm sorry. January 19th, when will be the tax form?
Sir?
The tax form.
Oh, the tax form that Keir's got there. I might have the dates mixed up. For the tax form? 27th of the tax form, 19th for the tour PD.
So, so we are touring the police station from now until the bond election. Once a month, the next tour will be January the 19th at 6:00 PM. Again, this is a transparent government. If, if, if you all and myself, if we're going to vote on a new police station, you have an opportunity to tour the existing police station January the 19th from 6:00 to about 7:00. So that you can make your own, form your own opinion based on your own fact finding. Our tax forum will be January the 27th at 6:00 PM from 6:00 to about 7:00. Now, there are, there have been different ideas that have been floated throughout our community, different meetings that have been held about taxation. And what we say is, we would love to have those meetings here in this setting, right? So that we would be able to compare the different ideas and the different facts so that we can give our community the best information we possibly can so that when they vote, they would vote in as an informed way as they possibly can. And so to have different meetings in different locations would be defeating that purpose. But we are one family, we're one community, we're one Lamarck. We invite all of us. There are no right answers or wrong answers. There's just people trying to navigate an issue and get enough information to make a decision. That's all there is. There aren't any enemies or any opposition. That's not in, that's not the way that I look at things. We have an opportunity and we need all of the information from every spectrum so that we can make an informed decision, nothing more, nothing less. The next opportunity would be January the 27th. You're welcome, welcome, welcome to come and be a part of that process as we try to understand with clarity the next move forward for, for our tax rate. Very good. If there's nothing further, we enjoyed each and every one of you. Thank you all for staying until 10:37 tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. You brought that. Mayor Protem gave me this five times. There's a free car seat check. Free car seat. And Chief Mayor, man, you stayed for this one thing, didn't you? I know you did. There's a free car seat check Saturday, February the 5th, 2022 from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Lamarck Fire Department of 5715 Texas Avenue. That is the West Side Fire Station are also known as Central Fire Station. Free car seat check. If you have a car seat, you have a young person, certainly you can go by the fire station on February 5th from 10:00 to 1:00 to allow them to make sure your seat is installed properly and adjusted properly. Because there are a lot of issues that come out of improper, improperly installed car seats. Our children suffer in accidents. Unfortunately, I know that first, firsthand, being a former firefighter. Now, there's nothing further.
I have one more, sir.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Crime Stoppers.
Yes.
On the 12th at noon, high noon at Kelly's.
This Wednesday at Kelly's at 12:00 PM, we will restart our Crime Stoppers group. And so, yes, yes, thank you, Ms. Pennington. And so let's look forward to that. If you're able to make it, please come out and be a part of Crime Stoppers. We are full steam ahead in this city with our safe city initiative. Thank you all for coming out. I thank you all for participating. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.